For public officials for a limited number of times for health or other personal matters. End quote. While it is true that state ball allows for electronic participation, it only allows for electronic participation if there is a written approved policy. The meeting in question happened on June 15th. You did not adopt a written approved policy until July 6th. Clearly, as noted by Mr. Payne in the July 6th meeting, there was not a policy in place for the June 15th meeting. So it doesn't matter what you amend to your minutes. The electronic participation at the June 15th meeting was still a violation of state law. Additionally, Mr. Payne knew by his own admission during the July 6th meeting in his role as county attorney and as parliamentarian of this body, that Mr. Fairchild's participation at the beginning of the July 6th meeting was in violation. How can a member that is technically not present vote to approve or abstain from a vote? They can't. They are absent. It wasn't until the resolution was passed and a vote was made to approve his attendance that he could participate. I think that if you all as citizens and taxpayers were sitting on this side of the lectern, you too would be deeply disturbed by the county's and this board's failure to follow published county process, bylaws, Robert's rules of order, and more importantly, state law. So I'm confused as to why it looks differently from that side of this lecture. What happens between here and there to change the perspective? Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wish to speak at this time? Just come on down, sir.
Name is Bob Holberg, Free Belkin Corp. The reason I'm here to speak to you is because I'm appalled at this Wolfpack development. The idea that-
Sir, if you're here to speak on Wolfpack, that'll be during the public hearing.
Oh, sorry. That's my first time here.
That's okay. Appreciate you coming. Appreciate you coming. Thank you so much. Now, I see a hand raised, Mr. Guano.
Yes, thank you very much. Donna DeGuano, 148 Crepe Myrtle Drive, Palmyra, Virginia. Now, you know I love you all dearly. You guys do a good service and we appreciate it. I appreciate it. So don't take my comments too lightly. But you, the county government's kind of like a cheap date at this point. You're a little too fast and a little too easy. So I'm requesting that you slow your roll and don't accept those cheap grocery store flowers. Wait for the good ones. Get a little more information. Think about what you're doing before you vote on something because you're affecting a lot when you do this. I would like to think that the county could have a vision of what it should look like. I didn't know that our vision of the county would be continuous metal sheds, window dressed by a foot-high shrub. You can go out on 618 and see those. Those are beautiful little tiny shrubs. I joked with a friend just recently, I will be a qualifier. I am five feet tall. If I can't see over that shrub, that's probably pretty good. Okay? So you might want to, I'll be willing to stand out there when they put the shrubs and say, you know, I can't see those metal sheds. So I'm volunteering my services. I'm very sad for this county. As you now come into this county, you have at the beginning, at the Albemarle line over here, you come in, drive a half a mile, and you see, you will be seeing the beginning of suburbia. Now, what I like to call it colonial circus. It is a three-ring circus. We're going to drive a little farther now, past a couple of pretty areas, and then wander past a bunch of metal sheds. This is very depressing. But that's what we got because people aren't thinking and they make votes and whatever. I unfortunately or fortunately took a ride over into Nelson County. Gorgeous, gorgeous county. Somebody had a vision there. They've got continuous vineyards and cider-y places, little kind of antique shops. Charming, charming kind of places to stop along the way. You can get ice cream at this place that the high school kid, just so charming. We ain't getting that out here. We're going to be a land of metal sheds and urban housing. But I'm hoping somewhere along the line, somebody gets a vision and does better. We do have a comp plan. I don't see it being applied. We're writing another one. I'm sure that won't be applied either. But we'll do our best on it and I'm sure we'll keep going forward. I'm not going anywhere yet. Take me a while to find this place, but it may take me to find a place out of this county, I'm hoping. But while I'm here, I will participate and all I'll ask you is to slow your rolls and think before you take a vote. You are doing damage and that's not fair. Be better stewards of this gorgeous land. This is a gift. We were gifted all this beauty. Stop destroying the beauty of this land. And if things are going in, please window dress them. Please have a vision of beauty. People moved out here because it's beautiful. Nobody wants to look at a metal shed. I don't know, maybe somebody does. I personally don't. That's not my preference. But maybe that's what the board likes, metal sheds. We'll go out and put them in front of your yard. But anyway, thank you very much again. Wait for those better flowers. Don't get those ones from Food Lion. Somebody will show up with a better proposal for you. Take the best and leave the rest. Look at that Methodist group. You turn them down. Were they committed to that project? No, they weren't. They did not come back. You know, that should teach you guys a lesson. If people are committed to do their business, they will continue to come back and do the right business. But you guys are too quick. You don't take applications correctly. You don't study your homework. You don't do your homework. And your county lawyer, oh, please. Please, no. Uh-uh. Mr. Diggs has done more to protect this county as a lawyer than I think anybody up over there. So anyway, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
One other one that I had their hand up at one time. The Bronis.
I just learned that I should wait till public hearings. It has to do with the Wolfpack property.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else we should speak at this time? Ms. Morris.
Suzie Morris, 6840 Thomas Jefferson Parkway, Palmyra, Virginia, Quinley Farm. I'm glad to see that recently you have proffered out certain things such as storage sheds on something that's coming up. However, they seem to be the flavor of the day up in the Rybana community planning area. And I'm quite concerned that things like, oh, it's generally or adequate buffering. It's not. And it would appear that we're going to have not just the scraped and scalped and burned land at Colonial Circus when we enter a half mile into the county, an historic gateway. But then we will travel a little further and we may have something which I consider more industrial. It doesn't belong with brick buildings and the businesses that you think of as business. Metal storage sheds do not belong in the small place that we have armies and other businesses and banks and credit unions. They don't belong visible on a historic gateway to this county. We already have a problem which was created several years ago when the big thing coming up a half mile into the county was approved. So we need to think carefully about what we're approving and where we're putting it. These types of things do not definitely belong on a main gateway into the county. You're ruining your county for economic opportunities that could come with smaller businesses, art and artisans, wine tramps, et cetera. And it would seem, because I wanted to speak to that developer, I volunteered to go by myself. One old lady that's lived in this county almost 80 years. And I love this county. I live and breathe it. And unfortunately, I always thought of all the Vanhams as good neighbors. We look out for each other. We communicate. And I found as an educator of 54 years, that communication is the key and that you have to deal with a diversity of parents and students in that. And that you have to communicate. And sometimes even if you disagree, the best things come out of the disagreements that you have in a discussion. So I can't understand if someone really wants to be a good neighbor, why they weren't willing to at least meet with one five-foot, one plus, a little bit individual. I would have loved to have done that and have a discussion. At some ways, we could have done a little bit better on things. But definitely, and it would appear that if a contractor's storage yard is approved, which I understand is supposed to be enclosed, that that would then possibly have better buffering. So to me, that's kind of a bribe. You give me this and I might give you that. But we don't ever know what the adequate buffering is because when we see it later after it's put in, it's not really adequate. Who determines it? We need to think very carefully about the things that we do to this county. Thank you.
Valerie Callen, 17th Street, Drybana, Palmyra. I'm also here to talk about ICP 2201, Johnson and Company.
If you're just talking about Johnson and Company, that's the public hearing. I mean, just. I'm sorry. I'm getting confused. It's been a long week driving that bus.
Want me to continue?
Go ahead.
Okay. Reserving the rural character of Rybana is a priority. It's a priority in our comprehensive plan with board, with residents. Contractor's storage yard does not meet this goal. The property is adjacent to a residential area with some of the most desirable housing in the county. SUP 2201 will adversely affect the property values there. No one in that area is in favor of the rezoning or the contractor's storage yard. As far as mentioned, the treaties that are planned in there are not going to be high enough to hide the building. I circulated a petition in my neighborhood. It was the easiest petition I've ever circulated because everyone was happy to sign it. I didn't even have to finish explaining what it was about. They knew and were anxious to sign. A contractor's storage yard will have noise pollution and light pollution. When I lived in Pennsylvania, in Bucks County, which was a rural farm area, lots of horse farms, about a mile from where I lived, they put in a home deco and it's all we heard from 6:00 AM until noon. The lights, I could see a lot of away in my house. It was one of the reasons I moved here and selected Rybana as opposed to Charlottesville because I liked the decent climate. And I really need to see this county just turn into another Bucks, which is what's happening. Existing businesses will be adversely affected by the change in the surrounding settings. You will be able to see the contractor's storage units from South Outdoor Patio where we have their restaurant, rentals for future tenants in that area. And the adjacent shopping center walls will be adversely affected. All of those businesses basically serve the resident of Lake Monticello. And having, we want to keep them there. We're happy with them. They've had, in the 17 years I've lived here, there's been a lot of turnover because it's difficult to have a business succeed in a small shopping center like that with a small community. But now it seems to be pretty stable. We haven't had a lot of turnovers. Finally, SUP 2201 doesn't benefit the community or the county. No jobs are going to be created or very few jobs will be created. I'm not sure what is so attractive about this. The frontage is, there was a waiver so that the frontage could be used. It's not going to be big enough. It's going to add noise. It's going to sound slightly. Why are we doing this? I encourage all things of the justice. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize. Wish that was the only mistake I made today. All right, anyone else?
I don't appreciate it. As a citizen, I've been here 21 years. I bought into a planned community so that I wouldn't have to be involved in areas where the county thought first of taking care of small businesses in the sense of putting up storage sheds. But in the 21 years I've been here, I've seen an awful lot of managed storage sheds go up in this county. And I don't care what's in them. There's still metal storage sheds. They're still unsightly and they do not have any kind of buffer. I looked on the website to find out if you had done an environmental impact assessment study on any of our developments. And I could not find a single environmental assessment impact study for any of the new developments that are going up. Maybe I misunderstood what I was reading. Are we certain that in all these different places where all the land has been torn up to pieces, that there aren't any frogs, salamanders, native plants? Are we absolutely certain that all these things have been taken care of before we allow them to just come in and destroy the environment? I don't think it's appropriate for us to continue to move forward so quickly that we aren't thinking carefully about what we're doing to our county. Colonial Circle is a total disaster. And I'm very sorry you approved that. By approving this tacky storage shed right next to Sal's Businesses and next to the State Farm Insurance and next to the Jefferson Pharmacy. I have to think of the name of the pharmacy. Use it all the time. Can't remember the name of it. The Jefferson Pharmacy. You're doing them a huge disservice. They put up beautiful facilities. We use them. They're stable. We enjoy them. I had lunch at Sal's today, out on the patio. And I nearly fainted on the floor when I thought really carefully about what I'm going to be seeing over there. And it's nothing but metal sheds. Don't be so hasty. Think. Please. Please breathe. And it's not bringing any jobs to the county. Not a single one. I thank you for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else which speaks at this time? Seem none. Seem none online, I don't believe. Oh, now close first round of public comment. All right, folks. Next up are public hearings. First up, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Quarterly, we'll change. All right, gee. The presentation's B.D. quarterly update. Scott Thornton.
Chairman, board members, Mr. County Administrator, how's everybody doing today?
Doing great. How are you doing?
Doing well. So quarterly updates. Since the last time I was here, so our maintenance folks, just to give you heads up, the third round of moments, probably going to start in the next couple of weeks. It's going to be our primary and secondary. Maintenance crews for the last quarter have been doing a lot of work on drainage repairs, opening up pipes, ditching, things like that. I'm sure everybody here is aware. A lot of thunderstorms come through, a lot of drainage things to produce themselves. So we've been working on that. Also, there's been a lot of prep work in advance, the scheduled resurfacing work that's been going on in the county. So they've been taking care of that as well. Some updates on August 1st. The smart scale around five applications went in. Three projects were submitted for Rybana for smart scale. You have 53, 618. That's the left turn lane. 53 and 1015, roundabout project there. And Route 15 and 631, a left turn lane project was submitted there. All of those are submitted for consideration. Estimates are going to be updated in verification on those. And I'll pass those along as soon as that information is made known to me. Upcoming work, we do have a bridge project around 631, a superstructure replacement. Looking for that to start on October 17th. And the anticipated duration of that work is about five weeks. There will be some road closures and D4s put in place in order for the bridge crews to complete that work. And as soon as I have that D4 in its term down schedule, I'll pass that along to the county administrator and fire and school services. Last thing I had on my list, the traffic study that was requested for Cover Bridge Road for the warning signs and the other advisory signs. They have, that study has been completed. They are working through the process of fabricating new signs for installation. They are not immune to supply chain issues, so it will probably be a few weeks before we get those up and installed. But that was approved. We're in the process of getting those up. So that concludes my report and I'll take any questions.
That covered bridge and vulnerable. I just know that that's like, that's citizens' responsibilities with the state company there and open it up.
Is it a driveway pipe or a crawl?
No, it's crawl pipe. It's called pipe for covered bridge.
Crawl pipe did ours.
Okay, yeah, that's collecting a lot of work and a lot of work comes up. Anyone else?
I have a question. I have a question about potholes.
Yes, ma'am.
Especially those that run into a ditch. Now, on Windville and River Road, there's been a huge one there. You come out of Windville and you make that turn when you hit the rest of the road. Now, someone tried to repair it and all they've done is put stone and something in it and people just ride over them. The pothole is there again. I know for a fact that if I ran into a pothole and ruined my tire and my ramp, I couldn't report it to D.D. You would not, I would have to replace it on my own. And there's another one on Florida Ford when you go around. You can just drop off just a little bit and you drop right into a deep pothole. So I don't know, let's Rybana, let's D.D. take care of those kind of things, but they have to have a work order.
Yeah, so there's a couple of different ways that you can report those. You can call our residency office directly. There is also the 1-800-4-RIDE option to call. Anybody can call that. That goes to our B.D. call center in Salem. They will take the information, create a work order, and that gets distributed to the Palmyra area headquarters. Alternatively, if you don't want to talk to anybody, you can go on our B.D. website. At the very top right, there is a link for a road problem. You can type in the address, but put a description of the problem and it will automatically generate a work order for us and send it to the area headquarters. So there's several ways to report that.
Okay, I'll be happy to do that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I live on 53 where the repavings happened. And it looks great. I've heard other people comment on too that it's really I know for safety-wise and everything, it was purposeful, but it I've had people talk about how great it looks. It's smooth, nice job. And that leads me to the painting on 53 earlier in the year. I remember Eric, remember you got a note from, I think it was on my two cents, somebody about Route 15 and talking about how rough it was. And I don't remember what came of that. I know.
Yeah, I thought we talked about that. Route, I mean, so 15 and then you, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, they did a different type of treatment and surfacing on that. You can talk a little more specifically about it.
Yes, sir. Route 15 had a latex modified seal put on it. So that is not, that is a seal over the existing asphalt. So there is some patching. But it's a very sturdy, almost if you were sealing the driveways, that's seal correct, and preserve the existing pavement line. And so that adds, you know, five to seven years on the existing pavement. What you see out on 53, that is a two-inch milling bill. We're actually milling down two inches of the existing and then putting back two inches of asphalt. So it is, it's just, there's two different applications. So the latex modified seals put down on 15, until it cures and gets some wear on it, it does, it is very rough. You're going to get it down initially, but then after that, it'll smooth on out.
Thank you. And at some point in the future, I mean, would that type of treatment go on 53? Once 53 runs its course or it starts getting rough or?
It's possible. A lot of that determination is made by traffic volumes. What we see when we do traffic counts and just how much wear in each individual. So we submit roads based on the amount of travel and the deterioration that we see. And then once we submit those, our traffic engineering folks can come out and take a look at it. Our pavement agents, those come out and take a look at it. And we provide recommended treatments. We have a discussion. The best one is chosen moving forward from there.
Well, I mention this all the time, but South Boston Road or Riverside Gate, it continues to be a very dangerous place to turn. My wife, in fact, said it was almost like that for when a pickup truck came over here about seven miles an hour across there. So if we can at least maybe try to trim the trees back so that there's maybe a little bit more line of sight when you're looking to your left, that would be great. But it's, I mean, I use our gate every day. Look to the right, look to the left, look to the right, look to the left. Sometimes I'm still one second away from a car. It's just that close.
My bus, my bus ride is now in the Riverside section. I came out of it this morning and somebody turning out of the Riverside Gate said they wanted to get in front of the school bus and turned into the southbound lane beside me. And then a car comes around the dirt. We almost had three vehicles collision as they sped around. There's not a lot of fun on the school bus.
I'll start from there.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you for all you guys. I've been working a lot. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. And supervising also. If you ever have like road issue where you see potholes, you just want to email me where, you know, where it is. Like, so I can also email Mr. Thornton and let him know too.
One thing to ask, maybe for the next time you come, I don't think we can get some sort of narrative about Route 53 and 616 as far as with the growth that we have that keeps coming into the Lake Monticello, what I call the Beltway area. What the projections are of, you know, like, for example, I've heard that can never be expanded to be wider than two-lane road. Just what are the possibilities of that road for the future if we keep growing the the areas that feed into that, into, in and out of town every day? Okay, thank you.
Pretty much impossible once you get up to Longchamp. But you know, before then, I'd say there's some houses that are so close, it's going to be difficult.
And you got buckeye and curves and.
Yeah, well, you could move it up dirt there with that National Historic Site.
Yeah.
It's going to be tough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We'll now move forth. We'll now move forward for public hearings. AZMP 2203 Wolfpack Properties LLC, Mr. Miles.
Yes, good evening, Chairman, Chairman, members of the board. This is the ZMP 2203 Wolfpack Properties LLC. His request to conditionally resign from D1 General IPO to the D1 General Business and Industry Classification of 35 plus or minus savers of tax nets nine, section eight, parts is 11, 11 B, C, D, F, and G. He is not, he is not involved. Subject properties are generally located on the south line of Lake Monticello Road, which is State Route 618, west of Blaine Bernie Road, approximately two miles east of Lake Monticello Road from the intersection with Thomas Jefferson Parkway, State Route 53. And they're in the, right in our Lake Monticello, moving to the planning area in the Palmyra election district. And they're in the, right in our Lake Monticello, moving the planning area in the Paul Meyer election district. This is a countywide view of it, basically it's located down in the north central part of the lake, on Lake Monticello Road, it's six eighteen, across from. Villages. Uh section four, just under construction. So the general vicinity map showing me the subject center. Um basically, adjoining areas all all except Mr. Greenwood's property would um would be um B one. In this general vicinity and then blind burning lots that are located. To the east of the property then. This is just better aerial view, take off the zoning layers, you can see. Um the vicinity area again is on Jefferson Drive. Blenberne. And the area um just opposite of Village Oaks is kind of out brings out the area, that's. The subject of the reselling, I will remind you that when I arrived here, this property was set up to be. Um in July of twenty nineteen to be six world cluster lots. Now we have an opportunity to have thirty five acres of commercial zoning rather than six new homes. So in in looking at this, uh the proper conditions, we're gonna go over the four that are presented and then applicant um. Will go over his um exhibit layout. But the conceptual resoning exhibit is the illustrated exhibit that you all have in your package that's dated August. Third um twenty twenty, twenty 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 two. Um it is conceptual in nature and it shows in consideration um of the rezoning for the area that we just discussed, uh Z M P twenty two or thirty. Key part is final site plans would provide. The additional safe and convenient vehicular, pedestrian circulation clean sites that might be occupied there for its complimentary uses. Screening, this was a paramount part of um the applicant and Wolf um Wolf Pack Properties. I think that they demonstrated from the start screening was extremely important to them and meaningful to the homes and businesses that surround the area. So the property um and we did work with them to integrate this in with the screening requirements or zoning ordinance. Um the property shall be screened from giving substantial accordance with your illustrated exhibit submitted August third. Twenty twenty two is prepared by Chimp Engineering C. Along with the sections of their apartments, section twenty two, twenty four, seven, which is the landscaping. And site um screening section of the Louisiana County zoning ordinance. The second portion of this proper is specific um items for the developer maintaining a one hundred foot. Vegetated property, shared property boundaries. And with adjacent properties running on Jefferson Drive, starting in the intersection, Blenberne Road and Jefferson Drive. This is something that we actually um Louisiana County and D dot in the last year have really been. Um interested in and working on making sure that. A V dot approved construction entrance area um which would be out on route six eighteen. Um especially if it's for any um site clearing or logging. That would be done, that we establish from six eighteen and that the developer would notify V dot. And in turn, uh V dot notified Louisiana County prior to commencing the construction. Last part was from the developer, no construction entrance shelving permitted to connect to Jefferson Drive. Running word inside of the gates of Lake Monticello, as he's been working for several months with Illinois. And last part is relative to the um only following zoning excluded uses. Um the following um permitted uses by right um would be um. Commercial uses, the automobile sales, that's like a car dealership. That's been excluded, boarding houses, self-storage facilities and indoor shooting line. On uses by special use permit, which still would have been one ordered to come back, and perhaps come back before you, you've asked for those to be removed. Um and you can see those um relative to those commercial uses and the. So what does that leave us with? Um leaves us with a lot of various um B one by right uses. Classified and um as shopping center uses, grocery and pharmacy stores. Um general uh retail stores, specialty stores. Stores that we typically have or um have available, commute to other areas. Too, so that shopping center type uses um. I think it's real important um in the in the opportunity to have a larger shopping center available. Um reading from the staff report, um letting letting me know that um. There's an opportunity for additional um John's Shell service um that can be used from this area, and not only that, not not that it would be. Commuting in and around Louisiana, but other localities and working in Buckingham County, that's a John's Shell service. Well, where are they going? They go into Alamo on um. Charlottesville and Luisa, well, they can stop here first. Um and they can shop at our location um and provide um additional tax dollars that would be. Um currently passing through um. And allowing retail tax revenues to be captured within Louisiana County rather than the typical retail tax leakage that we do have. And we all would admit, we would admit, that goes into Charlottesville, Alamo, and not only that, into Muslin County. Into Tocco, Greek and Intermodal County as well. So the centralized location um of this proposed shopping center is key to Louisiana County. Um not only that, in the neighborhood meeting, things came out um on uh June twenty ninth at the firehouse. Um that B one zoning um by rights is for daycare centers. Um not only daycare centers, people who live here would actually come and work at that shopping center, or work at some of the. Um uses that could be there. Um so that they would actually have their children or grandchildren in some cases next to them all at work. Um financial institutions, medical clinics, retail stores. Um restaurants and another one that's been um of interest. In this area is veterinary office on cleaning type. So those are some that are still there. This point, I think Mr. Jones from Wolf Pack Properties would like to come up and go over.
Just one quick thing here. Just in your package, just one little quick item too, just to bring the board's attention, so in your package, you had uses permitted by right in the package. And you can see here, it shows what uses are currently available, and then it showed the strike throughs of the of the proffered out uses. I just need to bring two things to the board's attention, when the use went in there, there was two items that. Whether one item under by right that was that was missing from the uses, uh this was an older version. So small scale solar generation facility, and and to describe that, that is basically, for instance, an accessory use, so if someone had. Like the high school, for instance, by them having a solar facility on top of their roof, that would be considered a small scale solar generation facility. And those uses were approved by the board previously, but for some reason, this was an older. An older version that didn't get, that didn't make it in the package, and then these two pieces too, small scale and utility solar. Those are for um those were by right, I'm sorry, those were special use permit only. So the only one um in your package that did not have one of the by right uses was small scale solar generations. And what were the lower two again that? The small scale and then uh utility scales, so that's like large. Uh like a large utility type um a uh large utility uh establishment. If you think like, like what they're building by Cunningham and stuff like that, it's round mounted facilities, those types of facilities. Would be special use permit all.
I'm just thinking, does it not say small scale solar generation facility? Up there also, is that word?
No, it is. Yeah, it's, it is the same, so looking at an email from uh Mr. Payne's office, looks like this. This item is, is, there's an error in that, so basically, in the current zoning ordinance. A minor one is not in there, so so really what they should read is minor. Scale color generation facility, but as as the board proved it, it's small, so. Um so at some point, it's gonna have to come back to the board to update that, yes. I mean, so so right now, from a by right use, the small scale solar generation facility is the is the one by right use that was not in your. At the borders. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, as as we're making, as we're making the determination of zoning change, we just want to let you know that that item was 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 mess.
I just wanted to use the graphic that's after the presentation.
Oh, is it in your?
The same presentation. This combined is rather than two.
Evening everyone, I'm Justin Schim. I'm the president of Chimp Engineering, engineering this project and have a free presentation for you. Uh Judge Jones, who's the manager of the Wolf Pack Properties, also here to answer any questions, but I want to go through. Quick presentation first and then follow up on few planning commission items that came up in that discussion of last week or so. So the layout here is conceptual, but is what we've been working on hard for for months now. And the focus on this is to try to get a grocery store, anchor tenant and a. Urgent care type facility, just the urgent care facility would be just at the front. Grocery back in the middle, and then over to the right side, there you have some service lanes, retailer at the bank. Some retail shops, maybe a restaurant site or a brewery site toward back towards that little store more area. So that is the vision of the property, these things can change over time, we've laid out, we think so. A reasonable approach, things like the entrance, for example, we pretty much set where that is based on V dot requirements unless they're constructed around. It's literally like that, we have a lower intensity type uses planned for that, so office or complex. Uh using medical offices in the back there behind the. Urgent care site, uh what's proper out of this particularly is that the green zone you see there in the screen at the left, those that's the proper visual one hundred foot buffer. So that's about double the normal buffer for that type of use, so we worked on some language to create a. Guaranteed buffer there, you also notice the road stubs out, let's see towards Jefferson Drive there. The possibility exists, depending on the lake, is agreeable, that they actually have a connection to the lake directly. And another gate there, which would be a bar for to get it where folks can come in and out of the lake there into the shopping establishments directly. And it would give an extra entrance in half the main gate, I think. That'll be up to the lake, they choose to agree if they're from a private property there, control that access, but that is the vision. With the property and development of, uh can we go to the next slide? Oh, sorry, only have one this particular presentation, excuse me, so. That I didn't, you heard a lot about this around, I think, and the applicant is still very calm, talking to. Folks, communities, and two or three neighborhood meetings, uh I think a lot of folks around are well aware of what the plan is. One of the things that the planning commission, I want to address though, there's a. A concern, and we understand why, that this guaranteed path, right, and of course, not guaranteed, kind of commercial developments can't be. Guaranteed, because ultimately it takes entrepreneurs and come or a small business owner or a large business owner to come and set up shop. And be part of your community, but what I think is important to know is that, think about it, stance, the government roles we have, myself and laying out a concept for businesses to be. To locate and you all approving those, is that you create that opportunity. If this is not approved, what you have is, you know, sixteen house that there's something on the other one there. And no opportunity for businesses, there are really needed of community. I don't know, we'll speak out tonight, I'll become afterwards, but there's been a lot of comment in support of this. Because of those services that are needed, and you all are part of the community, you know that already, but. Where you have other projects, I think difference here, the projects, folks have come along, so we're gonna do this and we're gonna do this and have. Commercial and residential, the residential is built out first. Commercial things lag, and some folks have come along, so we're gonna change this commercial. Residential, so a a feeling that things were promised to happen, that's true. Uh so that has to do with timing, the economy changes, you know, I I was doing a commercial layout fifteen years ago. And you know, back before Amazon was a thing, right, you know, all these businesses that existed, that were small retailers, that kind of vanished. And that's just happens, I don't think anyone laying out a resoning fifteen years ago or twenty years ago. Could have predicted, you know, a guy selling books out of his garage and change E commerce, right, these things happen. For the most part, those things have improved lives of everybody, but you do get some changes with that, what's different here. Is that the owner, for one, they already bought the property, this is not a contingent like. The other use was, where it was denied, they didn't move forward. They already bought the property, they're already invested heavily. The change in zoning takes away the residential that's completely. Couldn't build a house in this after this approved. So they did not come with sort of a backup plan, oh well, we'll do some housing here and then we'll try to commercial. The only way they're making money is if this is successful, so I think that at least for folks who are concerned about that, this particular applicant. Is is proper outs, self-stores, and no warehouses, well, don't like it, but this is not used allow or. This kind of layout that are basically community services. So while I can't stand here and guarantee, they'll show up, we can say. The applicant is not, there's no backup plan here, they're pushing for this, it's hard to possible. Try to make this work, they're in the community, they believe these uses are viable, and they put their value on that, they bought the property. So that is a little different here, I want to make sure that came off to everyone's attention. And otherwise, I'm happy to answer the question, folks may have or Mr. Jones.
I do have a question, um with regard to the hundred foot buffer that you have there, and in the photograph, I understand it's all over there on top of it. Is the intention to retain that level of density in terms of trees, or is that just the way the photograph is being shown?
Well, it is intense trees along there now, I think what proper is written is that would be maintained. But yeah, I don't think there's, there's no intention or interest in our layout of touching those trees. Correct, a hundred foot buffer would stay beyond that, then it could be cleared or whatever, but that would stay.
Yeah, not in the buffer, right?
I I'm talking about in the, I'm saying, I'm saying, if you, sorry, I can't point it out, but yeah, that this whole area here being formed out here. Are those trees going to be maintained or is that just a photograph?
They are not proper to stay, so there's no, that's the way to back the property, I don't know if there'll be a use back there. There could be though, so the way they they are not required to stay by what we've promised. Uh to clarify that, there's no necessarily intent, but the proper protects specifically those in green strip.
Oh, I I've got a quick question, why, why didn't you carry the? Buffer down the proper, down the Blenberne Road and Jefferson Drive?
Well, there was a, it's a thought, and we hope this works, we would actually connect through.
Yeah, but then you just have that one road, it wouldn't just be the entire area cleared.
Right, I I don't think that came up in the, well, for one, again, we're not necessarily thinking about developing down there, but because of the street. Separating us, it's never been being sort of behind some path, so that's why we approached it differently, because it was rather across the street rather than. Behind some paths, I don't know, that's like, could be added to that first section, that the. Storm or area would remain natural, so maybe the area in question is just between Jefferson Drive and the. Green strip network, but the other, the rest of the Blenberne would remain as that air reserve storm.
That's a lot of open area that people be looking in on from Lake Monticello.
And what I'm saying, I know you've talked to them and hopefully we'll be able to work something out, we talked about that with regards to. Emergency services and just the safety of right ins and right outs, because people from V dot have come in here and talked about that. Um but if you could put that hundred foot buffer down that side and just. If you had kind of road area, kind of road area, that that's totally different for a game.
And and just one thing too, there would need to be a fifty foot, but the zoning ordinance requires fifty foot buffer where they not, where they did proper. There's that's automatic, yeah, so the ordinance backing up to A one, A one or or three or or four.
They'd have to have fifty foot.
Yes, I think yes. All time, isn't it? It is. So all the growth is gonna be a pile on the fifty foot of trees that gets kept, meaning it's not gonna be foliage, but.
As in the way the land slopes up there, the fifty foot of pines would block the view of most anything behind it pretty thoroughly. The site slopes up pretty quickly from there. So if you're looking at a business from the burning, it's probably twenty feet above you. At that point, so as far as you don't have to see under the pine trees in the site basically. You'd be looking at a middle of them. There's, there's slope paths to do this property.
I'm respectfully, I'm not sure that, I mean, I hunted that as a kid and so on, know the property fairly well, and especially when you come down Jefferson Drive. That comes from an elevation coming down into that bottom, meaning coming from the main gate heading that direction. I'm, I'm not sure that that's gonna, I don't have confidence that you're not gonna see through those vines in that. I, I also know. You said our role is to create the opportunity. Our, our role isn't just that. That's one potential role. Our role is also to check the interest of the citizens and to be sure that we're mindful of how things come in, how they impact their homes, their quality of life, their cost of living and so on. So there's kind of this, there's more to consider here. We're just creating opportunity for business.
Oh, so I think that's a, you know what I'm saying? I think you do have, the orders you have for landscaping buffers are required regardless of, you know, what additional properties are speaking that. All right. So certainly, I think that's the so there would be nothing other than that. I don't think this developer, he would have, you know, he would have to speak about it and hear what he's in front of. It really is a community driven activity. All this project can only be successful if the community wants to support the business and they're there. That's, that's the project. So I think they really are very motivated to, to be good neighbors in that respect.
Can you go through one more time? We talked about these orange boxes, what they would be. I don't know if you went on it. The left hand side of the grocery store, could you tell me what's the idea, what would be in there?
So we'll start to do it quickly again. The front is the vision of the urgent care facility.
Yeah.
And then towards the grocery store, the large box, and then your lower impact, you know, single level office building. Office and then something like that. And then over on the right side there, we'll move with a more traditional retail, small restaurants, that sort of space. Associated with the, the traffic from grocery store.
Mr. Schim, you said right back to the need more of the office, correct? Office, office space would be in this back area here.
The gray is all roads.
What did she say?
The gray is all roads.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Schim.
Thank you.
All right. Do you have any other questions? I'm sorry, I would either. Okay, well, she's speaking on behalf of the applicant. Is applicant available?
Maybe we could let the, let the public comment and then do Mr. Jones a chance to come up. Or this is just saying final remarks that's in the board.
Graves, allow. Okay.
In the board too. So I just had a question. Yeah. If we're doing it in this case, why wouldn't we do that all the time?
If they ask, if they request, I think we've done it. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
They'll ask, thank you. So we kind of have an answer policy that they, that they can ask.
Yeah.
To switch the.
Sometimes we have asked after the public have spoken, sometimes we ask.
Re-ask questions.
They want to address something that you've said.
All right. Hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. Please keep your comments to five minutes on topic and direct to the board. Does anyone wish to speak this time?
I would like to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I got a list right here. I forgot you brought that up to, told you, I wish that would be the first mistake I made. Or the only one. First up is, all right, I'm gonna struggle with some of these. Bob Holbrook, I believe.
Name is Bob Holbrook, Rebuilding Court owner. This whole project doesn't make any sense. We have twenty seven thousand people who live in our county. It takes twenty thousand people to support a grocery store. EW is barely holding on. That place has been troubled and happened and troubled for some time. If you allow this to go through. First of all, I don't think they'll ever get a grocery store. If they did get a grocery store, the buying over the money would be insane. EW would be immediately out of business. And Food Line could potentially fall out and say forget it. Or they both could have fallen out and then we end up with nothing. Yes, we can drive, we can drive to Charlotte'sville and go to Walmart. We all do. The thing that kicks my butt here is this medical center. This medical center is not gonna happen. Number one, there is a shortage in doctors and nurses that we all know. A lot of them were terminated, not getting the COVID virus. You know, shots, and so they got terminated and they just retired. Medical centers will be profitable. They're not gonna lock in and go, okay, you got three people coming in. Where's the number to support? You have this many people that need this kind of medical service every single day, twenty four hours a day. It's not gonna happen. I have a sister that lives in Ventura, California. She is the doctor. She works in what we call Doc in the Box, Medical Center. I asked her, I said, how many people you see a day? Since twenty five to thirty five, okay? How many people live in your town? A hundred and seven thousand. It's a big number. She also works for the county. So if there was a need for a medical center, if a medical place wanted to put a center here, they would have approached. They would have been approaching you guys saying, hey, we want this. You're not gonna wait for somebody to come in, buy some land and go, oh, we're gonna build this for you in the county. We're, so you're all, you're old people, you're gonna be staying. It's not gonna happen. It's like dealing with a timeshare sale. They paint this picture of how beautiful it is, but you forget that you can't get out of that contract. If they were gonna do something like this, put it somewhere like out on fifteen and Richmond Row. Why is that not happening? Because that's prime real estate. That's some big money. The real estate they picked up was a bucket of money. We should look more like Kedward. Croze. We shouldn't look like Richmond. We shouldn't go and let, let these weird developments go in. We should have five or six beautiful homesites. That would be good. Now is it gonna make us a tax dollars? No, no. But if they wanna go ahead and build, put them out on Richmond Row, you know, I'm the public, you know, let's throw it out there. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next up is Jan Tantangelo, Tantangelo? All those years of calling rolls, hang on.
So we try to leave Richmond. I just wanted to talk, I am a local business person. I, we are fairly new to Food Line. Over the year, three years, we love it, absolutely love it here. Love the country. We love lack of, lack, lack of traffic, what a concept. We not have that in any place we live. But I am also a small business person. I don't need the storefront. I also am the president of our local women in business, which is eight five plus women in business members, tiny women, and a lot of them do need storefront. We have a very, very big need for storefront. We have people who want to have a good quality business here for our community to shop here instead of going to the store itself. Instead of going to the food, we're not gonna get Costco. We're not gonna get the big store. We don't want those. We don't want those. But we do want, yeah, new shops. We do want nice premium stores, right? We do want a kind of a coffee shop. It's not gonna cover a lot of business. How many people drink coffee and want to go someplace and have a nice cup of coffee near as often? We do have a need for our local businesses, right? I really do. I, I talk to a lot of businesses. And having something close to the main population, we have twenty seven thousand people. Wait, and we're, we're growing. We're gonna have, I don't know how many people in the new development, right? They're gonna be kind of we're likely growing, but we need to smart look. We need to start looking at what we need in our community and to have quality, not quantity, quality. No franchise and funding. They're willing to burn and not having franchises, but they take money out of our, out of our community. We need to have local, local family, mom and pop businesses. So we keep our, our money in our county and that's really important. As, you know, looking at the need, we do need an edible facility. I really love to have our urgent care would be wonderful. My husband and I both had a boat to Charlottesville for an urgent care, basically just for a prescription because we both get by a chip. So it would have been the same with the county. But when we both had to go there different days, two hours, two or three, basically we did a prescription. Would have been great to have something here. If that doesn't happen, and I don't know if it will or not, I'm thoroughly in support of that. I would love a market. Don't know if we have a population for market, would be reasonable, right? But we do have a need for other services. And that's what I'm looking at this for our businesses, to keep business taxes lower. Another restaurant would be great. We are within business, we really use local businesses. We go to every, every week, we go to a different restaurant. We have little mini lunches and we go to different restaurants. We did every restaurant in this in our county. We would go for a meal, we're going for a meal. Right? We even go for a meal, we sell, sell before you. Right? So it's important that we support our local businesses. And if this comes in, I guarantee you, we, if we built it and we have smart road, it will happen. If it looks nice, it's professional, it's well kept, we're going to have good quality businesses that people will use. Okay. Businesses have such a huge investment to them. I know this gentleman or the people that are bought the land, they put in a lot of money to buy the land. Then obviously they want to get that right back and have a profit. A lot of people go into business to make a profit, right? Concept here. And everyone of these businesses, it's gonna cost them a lot of money to open up a store like that. So we really, really do need to support our businesses. And I know our women in business well, in our chamber well, and I'm here for the, the community well too, as long as it's good quality local businesses. So if you can't help us, because you need more information, I hope that you'll prefer it. So that we actually gather more information and actually maybe good quality decision based on what you want. Thank you very much.
Thank you, man. Holy cow, geez, my water dig. Next up, Jim Tantangelo.
Jim Tantangelo, thirty nine fifty five, East Erie Road in Scottville. And that's the program I thought it was about. I agree with my wife on the fact of the businesses and keeping the tax revenue here in Food Line County. So I don't think we'll leave there all along or even be around them. And the most important thing is I think we can have a few more businesses and support that so that again, it's a tax law, it can help the community as a whole, but also for, for control of growth when it comes to residential and commercial. So that, you know, this doesn't look like it's about massive, huge commercial enterprise and such. And also for, as I say, controlling the residential. It's good that some of the communities are coming in, that'll help the other businesses in the community also and raising the tax law. But within our control of that atmosphere will be good. So basically that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir. Next up, Corbin Flynn.
Mr. Chairman, Board, Corbin Flynn, three nineteen Shiloh Church Road. A few things regarding this particular project. Sort of a tough decision really on y'all's part. I, I agree that it's probably high in the sky. The fifty three thousand square foot grocery store that's gonna come into this place. There were rumor that Navy Publix might have an interest. And that's just room, the closest Publix has been Short Pump. And then right go, three hundred thousand population. Giant shopping center on Pan Topps Mountain is fifty four thousand square feet. And, and this is gonna happen right outside Lake Monticello. The same place that you three guys talked about the traffic on fifty three and Riverside Gate and how those roads are scary as they are right now. So my question is, is how much growth are we gonna try to dump into Lake Monticello area? I mentioned back at the invalid June fifteenth meeting that there's over sixty acres already zoned B one that's not developed yet around Lake Monticello. In addition to that, there is R three developments which allow commercial development. So you have about a hundred and fifty acres of land that's already zoned for commercial that's not been developed yet by choice or whatever the case may be. I do believe that if a big grocery store or a medical center wanted to come into this area, they would come in. I do believe that if, if the Wolf Pack property had somebody on the book, they would be speaking and saying, hey, we have a contingent contract that we're gonna, we're gonna put our medical facility here. And a medical facility may be great if you can find anybody to work it. The other thing is, is where do you stop? Where do you stop taking A one property and then just changing it to B one property? You have a thousand acres, a thousand, one, zero, zero, zero of A one property just on fifty three, six, eighteen and six hundred that's A one. So at what point do you tell that person that comes in, we're not gonna change yours? We've already got way too much. And as far as the profitability, just like the six acres at seventeen, tax map seventeen two dash two that you guys voted to be A one to B one at the invalid June fifteenth meeting. It increased the value. So there's a profit, whether it's developed or not. In the event, the owner of that property or the owner of this property has it now changed to B one. They have an opportunity of nothing else, just to sell the property. The land around Food Line, twenty seven and a half acres. This is thirty five acres. The land around Food Line, tax assessed at a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars an acre. This gentleman paid about five hundred and thirty thousand dollars for this property. His tax assessment's right around that same amount. And I'm sure he's got a lot more money invested. But if it's turned into B one and if its assessment is the same as the Food Line Shopping Center, which it should be, if it's gonna be a shopping center, now all of a sudden his assessment's five million plus. So he will profit. So he will profit whether he builds this or not. If he can sell it, now he may not be able to sell it for five million because businesses want to know that they can come in and open up a business. Sort of a, a hard, a hard thought. But if he paid a half million for it and he's got a couple of hundred thousand tied up in it, he might be able to sell it for two million when the county should be assessing it at five million once you guys pass it to B one. So where do you stop? Do we do another, this is going to increase the amount of undeveloped business by fifty percent? If you do that. At what point do you stop? If Chris wants to rezone his property there on fifty-three, would he be turned down because we got too much? Or do we just, every A one that comes along, we rezone?
Thanks, sir. I'm going to mess this up. I think it's Nancy. On the, it's at nineteen Fleetwood Drive. I'm sorry, ma'am. I remember you said it. On top.
There you go. It is a difficult one. School teacher, bus driver, it doesn't matter, still are.
The teacher.
Okay, hi, Nancy, nineteen Fleetwood Drive, speaking on the, um, someone property here. I really don't see how any of that can ever happen. Doctors are retiring, doctors are, there's a doctor shortage in the nation, not just here in Chocolateville, but in the nation. There is a shortage of nurses in the nation. So I don't see that this urgent care facility is ever going to happen unless he's got it written in gold someplace in his back pocket that nobody knows about. It's not going to happen. We do not need another grocery store. The Colonial Heights Circle, whatever that thing's called, Colonial Circle, has offered and says in their plan, there's a grocery store coming. How many grocery store possibilities do we need? We can't even support in a long-term lease with Food Line. They do it every five years. That's not good for this county, having more empty land. If you say yes and they rezone it and they go in there and they strip that land, I will be driving down Jefferson Drive, time towards Lenbury, and I will see that empty vacant, dirty, dusty lot. They didn't grow Walter a buffer, even if they're required to. If you needed, didn't show up on their plan. You asked them if they were going to keep all the extra trees that appear on overhead, um, the aerial view, thank you. They kind of hinted that it might, and then they kind of hinted it might not. They kind of hinted that they're going to work with, um, the Homeless Association, get a new gate in. Nobody wants that gate. Some people believe that we need more retail space for small businesses. Yes, small businesses, you need a little bit of help. But they could be done in Fort Union, which is an area that was dying. Why can't we help them? Why can't we make these areas better instead of just letting them die out like Columbia? Let's fix what we have. Put the small businesses out there and let them help everybody get better. It would be a good thing. I didn't see any car offer in a, he's getting on a map that showed the entrance to this facility, to this, um, new area. I'm very concerned that we won't have the proper entrance and exit with a circle because if there's a shopping center that goes in there or an urgent care, that generates a lot of traffic. And I live, you know where I live, and I am always fighting to get out of my neighborhood onto fifty-three. And the new possibility of this storage sheds, that's going to add traffic right there. And that's going to have more opportunity for accidents. So, and I asked that in a while, we have eaten garbage, we have stated, have they offered that? Has it been done? Has it been considered? I'm not sure that it has. What will it look like? Will it be brick or is it more metal buildings? Who knows? We don't. Mr. Orion, you said you refer to our area as Beltway area. Well, we don't have a Beltway. We have one lane, two lane roads, and that's it. With people speeding on them as it is. You can't keep people from going fifty, fifty-five on those roads. I can't imagine what tragedies are going to happen if we continue to develop that area at the rate that we're going. So, no, I'm not in support. I couldn't possibly be in support of something I don't think can happen and is not viable, especially medical and especially groceries. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Valerie Calma.
When something sounds too good to be true, it usually goes too good to be true. An urgent care facility sounds great, but its staff will never, our county could support one. In addition, there is a shortage of healthcare workers, uh, not only doctors, but nurses, technicians, everything. I used to work at VDC and, um, they have a wonderful nursing program. Unfortunately, they're off at capacity. And one of the biggest problems with nursing programs and actually all the healthcare programs is finding the people. They had time faculty who could teach medical care. This is a problem that's going to last for generations, none of us coming in. It wasn't COVID, it was happening before COVID. So who's going to stay at an urgent care facility here? It's also doubtful that we can support another grocery store with our population. And aside from this request, the Wolf Pack property's request, that's one of the things we switch where when they maintain enough businesses, then they're going to have to rezone into residential. With all the developments, and I'll include the contractors' storage or Colonial Circle, and there's approximately three hundred undeveloped lots still in Lake Monticello. We're soon going to hit, uh, hit, uh, we're soon going to hit Aqua Virginia's, it's going to be the process soon. So what's the plan? I mentioned that contracting storage is going to adversely affect our property values. Can you imagine what our property values will look like when our sewage chavans exceed Aqua's capacity? I started bringing milkweed a couple of years back to attract monarch butterfly. The chavens are fascinating, they're lime green, yellow, black and white. They're greeting old creatures, looking onto the stalk of milkweed and just burp it completely in a matter of minutes. Last year, there's been dozens of them in my garden. Last year, there was one, one cannibalism in my milkweed. This year, there were none. Moderates are now on the endangered species list. One of the contributing factors is loss of habitat. Not enough dung, not enough places to grow the dung. The MP twenty-two of three will destroy even more habitat. Before approving any of these proposals, whether it's Johnson, Inc. Company or Wolf Pack Properties, please think long-term. Route fifty bringing up these challenges. Uh, Monticello's not been a long time ago. Aqua is going to run out of capacity for sewage soon, then what? Will they dump the sewage into Mother Island until they're, they're approved for expansion? Has an environmental study been done? Has an engineering study been done? We need to address our infrastructure before we can put additional stress on the roads, water, sewer, communication, et cetera. Mentioned earlier that I've explored in Pennsylvania and Philadelphia, Denver. I worked in a place called King impression, and the area doesn't, the followers, when I say King impression, it was. It's a large mall, there are lots of walk-in buildings and lots of traffic. And every development, every development was required to make improvements to the roads and infrastructure before building. Include this Fluvana requiring developers to make improvements to our infrastructure? Or is it going to fall under the test range? One of the speakers earlier mentioned Nelson County. Nelson has all the limitations of Fluvana. It is rural, it has narrow roads, it does not have a major vibrant, it has limited internet access. I don't know what their word looks like, but I can only guess. But they have vision. By the way, the native's Maury, Maury and Kelly, he's a good friend. And they want to attract adult beverages, craft breweries. In fact, they brag about the water in Nelson to make theater. They brag about the water in Nelson to make craft spirits. They have lots of wineries and related businesses that fit that vision. So Nelson County is now a destination. What is the vision for Fluvana? Is it going to be lip-serviced for rural preservation? We need the vision now before our county becomes an overcame impression. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Nancy Hines. Or Haynes from one ninety Caribou Lane. Okay, she's not left. Next up is Miss Sandra Kelly, Kelly, excuse me, I'm sorry, Ms. Kelly.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Board, Sandra Kelly, tax map parcel seventeen fifteen X. Uh, I have a couple of questions and a comment. One question, I guess, and it's kind of initially before, but I'd be interested in hearing the developer speak as to what kind of vegetation that's currently there, if he plans to keep existing there. And my other question is with regards to the buffering, it's my understanding, Mr. Malz, you talked to this, that, while Mr. Schimpf said that a hundred-foot buffer, I think if I recall, if I understand correctly, I'm sure I'm correct or wrong, they're not required to keep the existing one hundred-foot of vegetation that's there. They're required to put, to have these hundred-foot vegetation there, which means that that could all be cut down and then a hundred-foot of new vegetation placed is my take. Now, I don't know, um, if many of you have experience with like construction or land disturbance, but many times when a developer comes in, they will clear cut a property because it's easier for them to move around and do what they need to do. Build these buildings, put in these, um, parking lots, roads, things of that nature. Also, when you get into land disturbance, uh, many times the disturbing of the land will impact the root system of the adjacent vegetation where you're disturbing. And you'll find that you need to actually take down more trees because they're going to die on you now because you disturb vegetation. So I guess the question is something that, when I, I had sent an email to the planning mission and I forwarded it to you all, I think I mentioned this in that email. It concerns me that I don't really know that when you guys did these illustrations and you're actually getting a clearer picture of what's going to be there. It needs to be more rendering than actually showing what's going to happen. This is really just, um, no, no offense to engineers, but it's like taking the, the Google map and wanting to have it putting blocks and roadways on it. But I don't think it actually shows you what you're going to be looking at, what the county is going to be looking at rather than this tax area. And I think it's important that when you're making a decision, that you actually have a clear understanding and picture what you're going to have.
Stop, they stopped.
No, that's okay, I was done. I'd say that you have a clear visualization of what everyone's going to see.
Thank you, ma'am. All righty, I'm done with my list now. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to come to the podium and speak? Okay, seeing none is.
I understood one speaker to say that there was a grocery store promised in Colonial Circle. My understanding, and I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's not a grocery store. It's been upgraded only to a convenience store that's part of the service section. So I, I just need to bring that out, so. I'm wrong, collecting, you know, the question was wrong, then we have to look back. Thank you.
Pretty great, two o'clock circle. Wow. That's some really hard comments, follow. Um, for ourselves, it's Colonial Circle. It's not a circus, I would never make fun of or disrespect somebody else's business or career in that fashion. Um, there are plans for a potential state for a grocery store. That's a, we find a grocery store if we come to that development. Third, Wolf Pack, I have been following through the community. Pretty much that last week, but definitely before as well, I'm just curious as to the voice and concern. I've spoken to a lot of people that agree with my own personal support of development and a lot of people that disagree with it. And I think there's some really rational concern being brought to the table. I think the developers deserve more time to maybe figure this out. I think it's amazing that somebody is willing to come and ask us what we want instead of just showing up and doing what they want. And I would love to see us able to work with developers like that. Um, so I'm, last week I said, you know, I, I definitely support it. I think that we should move forward this week. I mean, I think it would make more sense to give the developers more time. Maybe we can leave you more time and see what we can do as well. I have to leave, so I'm not trying to be rude, I have to go get my son. So when you see me walk out, it's not that I don't want to participate, I just have to go. Hope everyone has a baby, I don't think we can fight each other anymore.
Thank you, ma'am. Don't be that parent where you have to call, or you have to bust out. All righty, um, anyone else in the audience wish to speak this time?
Hi, boys.
Hang on, give me a second. All right, seeing none here. Now, Mr. Adrick. Oh, bro, oh, Bronex is up now, I'm sorry, I've, um.
Yay. Um, my name is Nancy Bronez and I live at five Lakeview Circle, Palmyra, in the Lake Monticello development. And we're very, very new. Um, we actually, um, have not fully moved to Fluvana. We're still weekenders, but we'll be moving in two years till we're here permanently in the home that we built. My husband and I love Fluvana County, we love the beauty and we do love the rural setting. We do, however, miss some of the services that we would have here up at, we live in Northern Virginia. Um, and we would love to see more services and the small businesses come in that have been mentioned through, um, a lot of these comments. A coffee shop, an ice cream shop. I'd love to see a little branch of the library out near us. Um, there are a lot of things like that that would really improve, improve life at that, um, in Fluvana and as certainly at the lake. I originally supported the idea of a grocery store and an urgent care facility, but did question whether we had the population to support them. After listening to all the comments today, I have decided that, yeah, we probably cannot support a grocery store or an urgent care facility, but having a, a place for small businesses would be lovely. When I first heard about this, I did some research and tried to find a comprehensive plan for Fluvana County. And the only one I could find was about twenty years old. And what was stated in that plan was that the community wanted a rural design, uh, element called village concept. And it really is what people have expressed, that they want it to be charming, they want it to be attractive. And I completely agree. I'd go, I'd rather have a Gordonsville than an Orange. We drive through both of those every time we come down here. And Gordonsville is charming and lovely, it's wonderful, it's a destination, it's all small businesses. And there are some design elements that should be considered when building any of these new developments. If we're going to do a village concept, then no parking should be visible from any street. Parking should all be in the back. An architect and design team should develop a facade that embraces this quaint village rural feel. There are concepts that have been applied in rural design and other areas. There are concepts that have been applied in rural design and other areas. And it seems to me that if we are really gonna have a vision for Fluvana County, which is what I keep hearing everybody say. Then we really do need to have a commitment to a design concept. That we're going to apply, whether it is to this development or the next development. Or any of the developments that we put in, because right now, there's no unifying theme. There's no cute shopping center anywhere that I have seen in Fluvana County. I mean, not to, you know, harp on it, but no, there, there's really nothing that's been developed here that I would say is visually attractive. And all that I've heard is that that's what people want. That we want it to be attractive. We want it to be quaint. We want this rural, you know, Joanna Gaines feel, I guess. And that's not hard to do. Architects and design people, that's what they do. So I would suggest that we all step back a little bit and look at the big picture a little bit more thoroughly. What do we want any development to look like? And one last thing is the definition of the vegetative buffer, which has been addressed by other speakers. That is the vaguest term I have ever heard. Vegetative could mean grass. And I think it has to be very specific as to what the buffers are going to be. And that is also part of the design sensibility. That we are gonna plant this X number of this type of tree. We're going to have light poles that are attractive. So I think we need to be far more specific in what we want any of our new developments to look like. Thank you for the chance to speak and I really do love Fluvana County.
Thank you ma'am, we do too. Next up is Miss Donna DiGwano.
Hello, Donna DiGwano, one four eight Crepe Myrtle Drive, Palmyra, Virginia. The lady just was speaking about, from Northern Virginia, about architectural design. We have been asking about having an architectural review board put in. We, hopefully we'll be able to put that into our new comp plan. We need standards and, and material standards and upgrading of standards. There are certain places that are already built here. They weren't put up that long ago. They're already falling apart. They look terrible. So that is something that we as a community really need to address is architectural review standards. Um, but material standards in general. People have mentioned that they want to go for a cup of coffee. There's Cup of Joe's not that far away. It's great. People are gathered there all the time, morning groups, prayer groups, every kind of group you want, they go there. Um, of course, ice cream tiamos, that's over there. I think that's the play, the name of the place. Um, but I get what she's going for. Again, I think we need to rent some motor coaches and go over to Nelson County to see how charming that county is. I mean, it's gorgeous. I am now jealous. I don't get jealous over many things, but that county is really gorgeous. And they dress up their place. It's not, not parking lots, not suburban parking lots like you see in Northern Virginia. Um, they are gorgeous, really gorgeous parking lots. And they got everything out there, beautiful. No metal sheds though. I did not see, they must window dress their metal sheds well out there. Somebody said something about, do we pay lip service to rural character out here? Yes, we do. We pay a lot of, a lot of lip service to rural character out here. Cause if we didn't, we wouldn't be seeing those metal sheds. We would have window dressed those things. So again, we don't stick to our comp plan. We don't even look at our comp plan. It resides on a website somewhere. It's actually been updated. It's not twenty years old, but we don't adhere to it. Uh, we'll, we'll do our best to write another good one, but as long as people get away with it. So on this whole thing about Wolf Pack, now I'm gonna ask you to put your thinking caps on here. Over in Louisa, just on the other side, in Zion's, on that side. UVA has a place. They've got a big facility over there. Do you think that if UVA felt a need with all of those people and all of us, that they wouldn't already open? An urgent care center? I think this developer is very savvy. He tapped into the two emotions that people want the most, urgent care and grocery. Now, I hate to be a suspicious person, but with the developer, just like that date situation. You don't say yes automatically. You vet this stuff. But I think he tapped into a good emotion here. Get them what they, put up what they want and maybe we can get that zoning result. Now, it's your job to do a better job and be good stewards and make sure you make sure that everything is there. I also feel very badly for all of those people that live in that area. They invested their money and bought those homes and now will be facing parking lots. And know the buffer, but there's never enough of a buffer. You can't fool yourself into knowing that there isn't an elephant in your backyard. That it's going to stink eventually. I'm sorry. The elephant will be behind you. And it is unfortunate for those people. Why are property not rights not taken into consideration here? It drives me crazy when people invest hard money and then get a toxic waste zone behind them. That is unfair. You should be thinking of the people who already reside here, not the businesses that so want to come in here. We don't know that this man is gonna come through with anything. I think he just hit on two things that he thinks we need and get that business zoning. But I don't even understand why it looks this suburban. Why are we even talking about a Beltway? Have you ever driven a Beltway in DC? That place will kill you. We don't want that here. I'm sorry. I don't want that here. I didn't sign up for that. I thought we were sticking to rural character. Now we're talking Beltway? What the hell happened? I'm sorry, didn't mean to swear. Uh, but anyway, I think that there's a problem. I think you should deny this. Again, if somebody wants to date you, if somebody wants to marry you, they will put a ring on it. They will do a very good job courting you. They will give you all your, their background. You don't even have to sign a prenup sometimes. But the, but these are developers. Be highly suspicious. Be a good steward of this land and the neighbors. Do not saddle those neighbors with stuff like this. You have to be very careful and don't head towards suburbia. Nobody here wants to be in suburbia. If they did, they would stay in Northern Virginia. I believe that. You know, I think they all got away from that to come down here to live in beauty. But I'll still go with the idea, we'll all get into a motor coach, we'll all drive over to Nelson together. We'll see what beauty looks like. Maybe then you guys will get what beauty is. And you don't see.
I hate to tell you this ma'am, the alarm has gone off.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear it. Normally I do.
I didn't think you could ma'am. I was trying my best not to interrupt you.
No, no, that's fine. I'll go. Bye bye. Have a nice evening.
Mr. Adger, now it's your time ma'am.
Oh my gosh, Donna, you're right. We don't want suburbia here. And I myself also bought into this thing because it's a smaller development. Then I stepped back and said, I started looking this stuff in two thousand twenty, well, last, last August, a year ago. I've learned more about county management and what tickles the ear about development than I thought I'd want to know. Let's stop and think about colonial circle, guys. You're all wrapped up around Wolf Pack right now. Let's put that aside just a minute. We haven't even got the eighty one thousand square foot colonial circle resolved yet. So far, according to all the documents I've seen, we've seen one approved S U P or convenience store slash gas station glass slash car wash on the corner opposite Eppert Church. One of eighty one thousand square feet. It also prompted a grocery store, restaurant, professional buildings, mall retail. This is a bigger scale, cause just to Wolf Pack doesn't have that, that, that much property. Why are we even talking another business community of this type with retail and everything? We haven't guessed, haven't even seen the other unfinished yet. Why? What's going on guys? Be for real. But what we do need now, I understand that urgent care is an issue. I agree, because we are, we are really rural. You are down at Zion's Crossroad, you can jump on the freeway and be down at Centerra in ten minutes. No biggie. But we really have two or three small professional office doctors bill of buildings here and we're by CBS. Who take care of some patients. Most patients have a lot of need for specialists. We don't have any of those here. So yes, they do put things up there that tickles our ear and say, hey, this is exciting. I agree. I'd rather go down to Mr. Thompson's, a place and have another big store. He's got stuff I can't get at Food Lion. But why not think of it as a two-way path? Why not look and put your retail over at Colonial Circle and keep proceeding with that? Why not Mr. Wolf Pack don't you go look at a prevent, a professional building complex? Let me, I just made notes. Urgent care, yeah, I still like that idea. But what about things like, oh, uh, dental specials? I had to go into Pantops to have a root canal. There's nobody out here that does it. Veterinarians, law offices, lifestyle counselors, mental health professionals. What's one of the biggest things we need to help people? And you are in a rural county with population that has a lot of people that probably could use some health care professionals right now. Professional therapist, other medical fields. We have nothing but one or two small offices with a doctor. I think we got air, an eye care. We got a couple of dentists. What else can we have out here? We certainly can't with twenty seven thousand people support a complex, either complex colonial circle or this one. Colonial Circle was originally supposed to be a hundred and seventy nine housing units, period. That's what R three carried for. They came back and said, oh, wait a minute, we got eighty one thousand square foot of commercial space. We'd need more families to sustain a large commercial process, product or project. So I went back to the board. They asked for eighteen, you guys gave them three hundred and twenty five. Believe me, I've got all the paperwork in my, in the Wolf, cabinet downstairs. So right there, you've already changed his zoning laws just to give them a push from one hundred and seventy nine with R three to a five point five or three hundred and twenty five because they complained they couldn't have, couldn't support eighty one thousand square foot of commercial space. Finish that one. Why go to somebody else to finish that one? Or Mr. Wolf Park pack, why don't you go look at professional building, professional, professionals, professionals? Nope. Yeah, we need a good restaurant. I agree. But why not have professional office people out here that I described? That would take care of this community as a whole throughout the county, west of Columbia, Fork Union, Kent Store, here, wherever. We are the central part. Forty six percent of our county lives here. Around this lake, four thousand plus homes in the lake itself. You guys are not being for real. If you pass, if you pass this thing without going back and say, hey, let's take a look at colonial circle and get that finished first, then what we go from there? A full pack goes back and says, let me rethink that. Let's talk about the special businesses instead of retail businesses. Time for that. I'll support you all the way. Let's stop, take a moment and think. Thanks guys.
Thank you ma'am. Is there anyone else online in the stairs? She was one that I see. Alrighty. Any others? See? Somebody else can say this. Seeing none, I will now close the public hearing. Alrighty ma'am. Well. Do you want to hear anything from, would you like to hear something from the developer? Yep. I'm just making, I'm not trying to be smart, I'm just making sure I'm asking. Developer step forth please.
We have, uh, this development from the start, uh, we started this project under the year of him. And what we've done is taken a little different approach than my understanding, uh, what the developers have done in the past in the area. Uh, what we did, we worked with the lake as a unique position of the property itself. And, uh, with the community, surrounding community also. And everything that, uh, again, we proposed, um, to the board and in our conceptual layout has come straight from the citizens of the community. I just wanted you guys to know that, uh, we have, we do take this very seriously, uh, what we've done here and, um, everything again that you see is kind of straight from the, the lake or surrounding community and from the community meetings in the past. So we did have, uh, we had three, four, five meetings this year already prior to applying, you know, putting our application. So we did our homework, so to speak, and wanted to make sure that everything that we presented to you guys was something that the citizens wanted and that they helped the needs. Just wanted to let you guys know that. Any questions sir?
Can we have a question?
So I came up about the proper fifty foot trees on there essentially and your conversation was made as to whether you were clear cutting and you were planting again, you want to address any of that?
Yes, we had no intention of clearing any of the pine that we proffered. Um, again, the buffer zone, the vegetative buffer zone, that language actually came from the lake. Um, and we had came to an agreement with them that we would double the setback here. As, uh, I think Mr. Chen mentioned earlier, the required setback is fifty foot, of course. And again, we felt like it would be, uh, you know, more conducive and, you know, cause I certainly understood the residents being that close to the property. So we actually doubled that property, uh, upper and we, uh, you know, proffered out a hundred feet instead of the fifty foot required. But we had no intention of cutting, clearing those trees in that area.
Did the proffer say that, do you know?
Does it say anything about the trees in particular, sir? Now, I believe it does. Again, the vegetative, uh, the setback ordinance, I mean, it calls it, you know, you can have screening in the form of a fence or, you know, things of that nature. Suburb and, uh, you know, what we agreed to with the lake itself is that we really the trees, it's just increased there. So we have that understanding with them. Again, doesn't particularly say specifically that we're not gonna clarify those particular trees. I'm not sure the language seems to be that correct, so I apologize if it does.
Yes, absolutely. Alright, so the, and as the willing to scrap that maybe it's not perfect, but it says we shall maintain a hundred feet. To us, that is implied, there were communications that the trees are there and came. Maybe could have been slightly clear, but certainly the, the, what's been said, what was written, that the trees are there and can not any little bit of it to clearing those, we point that they said a hundred foot tree buffer is expensive to plant on that side, that's a hundred thousand dollar replanting effort. So the language maintained is, and say, the trees are there now, we shall maintain the hundred foot trees from your line.
Would you have any objection to expanding that section on the bottom lower right? To include the hundred foot buffer instead of the fifty foot? Mr. Dolls sort of trying, I don't think we need to do the entire section, but there's about seven or eight homes there that potentially could be viewing directly.
Actually, that section is, is proper now, sir. If you notice the language, it starts at the intersection of Blumberg and Jefferson. I apologize. I mean, the greener area should go down to where Jefferson and Blumberg connect. So if you look at the language of proper, it actually includes those seven or eight homes.
Great, great. Thanks for your pardon.
How many did, do you have any businesses already signed up to come in that you can tell us?
We can't technically sign businesses up, sir, or we, we're recent, of course. I mean, uh, we can't approach a, a public, for example, lower eight one. Because again, there's no reason for them to see this at that point. But we have had a conversation with several businesses and again, I know it's come up, uh, many times, you know, in conference tonight and, uh, you know, in chatter, you know, throughout the, the program review, things of that nature. But, um, we have done our research and of course, the county's done their research also. And the numbers do justify a second purchase. They do justify an urgent care. And if you look at the, some of the numbers that we were able to obtain, I believe these were twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen numbers, which are linked with surplus numbers. Purchase stores, for example, I think, uh, the county had a surplus of between twenty and sixty million dollars. It was one outside of the county demographic. So, uh, you know, I've had conversations with the line management myself. They're dying for an upstairs company. I mean, there are times they're overwhelmed, of course, you know, especially when they have storms and peaks of that nature. But we have done our research, sir, and, uh, we are in talks with several different, uh, folks about, you know, possibly how we do it in there.
It was mentioned, um, you know, sort of what, what the, what, what the, what the fact that we don't have an architectural review board and what the property management, what's, what's your vision for? What's your vision for how you'd love to see that property?
I mean, again, you know, many people mentioned, uh, you know, our feeling is that, that we want this to kind of melt into the, to the, uh, community. Again, you know, Lake Monticello is, and I hate to keep mentioning it because I don't want to spoil any other, uh, you know, part of the community or part of the county. But again, because of the unique positioning of it, we assured them and we assured ourselves that this is gonna be, you know, centered, it's gonna be something. this is going to be, you know, centered, it's going to be something, what we feel is a classic, something that's timeless, you know, something that's going to last. You know, I know people mentioned that'll build this and that's not what we're looking at. We're looking to do something more, as I think one of your ladies mentioned before, like the village, they probably conceptual plan, you know, I think two thousand and five. So that's kind of what we're looking at. Thank you so much, thank you for your consideration.
Alright. Any other questions, comments? I've got a few things. I don't think so, thank you, thank you, ma'am. So first, just some technical questions, when, so for the public, can we say, has there been an environmental impact study?
We don't do environmental impact studies, I mean, usually the developer does that, like for instance, when the county was doing the uh, Fork Union Business Park, we did a lot of due diligence, due diligence work on that property to market the property and make it easier for, uh, someone to come in and develop. So there's a lot of, you know, weapons delineation, they do fan, they do species and demography and stuff like that. But the county doesn't do, um, environmental impact studies on, on, on private, private property.
I think you have to qualify, because when you get to the site plan stage, we'll be doing a lot of environmental issues. First one is obviously, you know, plant service slowly, that, that's going to happen every, every time. Second one that you have typically is traffic. So that we are guided by what B-DOT rules are, uh, as far as where the entrance is. The entrance is shoveling concept land across the, the entrance to develop across the road. I'm confident that's a B-DOT requirement anyway. But, uh, in terms of improvements to the roadway itself, they, I, I can't imagine there will not be things like turn lanes required and things like that, that's a B-DOT decision. But, uh, there are a number of other things that you have to do. You have to know about water and sewer, for example, in this case, obviously, they're, they're, they're considering aqua. Uh, I understand that aqua is, and it's tend to have told them that there is supply at, obviously, distance is no problem because it's, it's right beside them, they must help. There's no indication that there are other problems. For example, underground storage tanks, things like that, previous development. I remember, for example, when the city of Charlottesville was designing its, uh, it's, uh, I forget what it's called, it's a housing development, it's a substantive housing development. It was on the property of the old city yard, and they had to do full environments study in that case, because it was used for forty years for changing oil in, in school buses and things like that. Uh, so, and they're clearly were, uh, clearly was evidence, you know, bleeding, I think. I'm not aware of any, any of this thing here. If they run into it, they have to deal with it. But, uh, environmental impact statement has a technical meaning. And no, we did not acquire a technical, uh, environmental, uh, study for something like this unless there's a, uh, that reason to believe that it's perfect.
Oh, the underground tank across the road we were talking about, that came up on fire and rescued us all, getting water pressure. For the housing across the road, when they said we were going to need ground tanks, that was prior.
Um, so what is, I can't think of the word, the layout of the buildings and the site and everything, when, at what point does that get filed off?
It's after rezoning. In this case, this is the only legislative change that needs to be made, is the rezoning. You can't submit that until you have a new zone. And you can submit it immediately after you use a rezoning. Now, obviously, you want to say immediately, that's a pretty flexible term. But there's no way you're going to, yeah, so, so.
So, so there's nothing holding the developer to the site plan? Because of that coming after the?
The concept, no, the concept plan is proper.
Okay.
So it has to look substantially like that. Now, that does not mean that's what the cyclone is necessarily going to look like, because that's not, it's not wrong precision, the cyclone. For the cyclone, you're, you're going to have to build, you're going to have to have it approved so your contractors can come in and actually work with the, with the cyclone with the streets and setbacks and we're going to put the border lines and all that kind of. But, but at the end of the day, we're finished, it has to look substantially like that.
Add some other stuff, does anybody else want to do?
This is the first step, when we, you can't go forward with the, the building until it's rezoned. And that's why we have the process that, um, that just outlined for us. And, um, the planning department is very involved, and we do have a system that, um, follows the rezon.
Some parts of the end I knew and some parts I didn't, and part of the citizens to be able to hear that and some of those concerns have been raised. So, I, uh, I, I believe in the developers and what they will do. Seem like good people that have these full intents. I'm concerned for the community that, and the citizens that, of their ability, anybody's ability to do the things that, when things are proposed. I have a friend in the medical industry, or in, in the building industry that, um, for a number of hospital groups and, uh, a number of universities has built their off-site locations, like medical buildings, um, credit unions, stuff like that. And, and I, I talked to one of the partners Monday, uh, in, um, Wolfpack, and I told him that this person said that, in, in keeping with the first gentleman that spoke, that almost never is it that you reach out to these medical groups and say, hey, would you come and look at over here what we're doing? And that's so regulated, structured and by the numbers that when your time comes, they let you know. And that's in keeping even with the retail industry, uh, which my business is a large part of. And when I was chairman of the EDC, one time somebody called me, uh, and said, hey, they got, uh, Walmart, who own their side of sixty four. How come we haven't let Target know to come on our side? I said, first of all, we don't have a side of sixty four, all four corners are Louisa. And second, we don't need to let Target know that Walmart has a facility on the corner of sixty four, and when our time comes, I do know this from the industry, at least at that large scale, um, they're going to let us know that it's time for that type of facility. And when you're talking about a fifty thousand, fifty some thousand square foot grocery store, I believe no matter what the intentions are, there's a substantial chance that these things are coming in and the
Are coming in.
Aren't, are not. Because of just getting those businesses to move into this area, again, the extent of between whether our numbers support it and whether they would let us know first. And the, yes, the community has had a lot of buy-in to this. And I, I've commended the developer a number of times in conversations outside of the board for engaging the community and for saying what he wants. But the community in part didn't come out tonight because they believe that that's what's coming. And I, I feel we have some responsibility to protect those interests from the community, that buy-in to what's coming in. I, I'm not opposed to the project, and I've said before, I probably support it. But until there's more structure to what's coming in, and again, knowing the industry, there's all kinds of scenarios where, before building, even before they're approved, where you go through an approval process with the municipality and often there's a letter of intent from, let's say, uh, Whole Foods that would say, if you get that passed, here's your letter of intent that would show the, the community that we're ready to make that type of commitment. So I just don't feel like we can, us or the, the developer can be sure that stuff is coming up. I'll say one other quick thing, when Sycamore, uh, the Houghtons property, I'm almost sure it is, uh, where now Tractor Supply is and our self-storage is going, I mean, I'm pretty sure it's happening there, I remember, when it went in front of the board supervisors years ago, that they showed a lot of slides of, it looked like colonial Winifred, just beautiful brick buildings and so on. And somebody said, might have been a citizen during public comments, somebody stood up and said, a lot's been said about what that's going to look like, but there's nothing that once this is approved, that says that's what that's going to look like. And, hey, I'm thrilled there's a tractor supplier there, but that, none of that looks like colonial Winifred. And not that it should, but it's part of the pitch and it's part of what the community's been told is coming, so. I just, I, I have concern of this moving forward now, and I would actually probably prefer that we defer and give the developer some opportunity to sort out the package he's presenting to the community.
So, one of the biggest things that, you know, Golden Virginia, one of the boards I serve on, is site readiness. You know, their site is actually at stage one, stage two, stage three, rezoning just puts it at a stage two. Um, you know, the developer here, in this case, is in my nine years sitting on board, the first developer that has essentially come in and said, I want to put in a commercial space without any residential space to attach to it. We all often get criticized for the fact that there is not enough of a balance in terms of commercial, uh, revenues coming into the county and also the need for the commercial space to sell it. You know, I'm an entrepreneur, you're an entrepreneur, we take risks, you know, we build our dreams. When we build our dreams, we do it with a lot of care and thought, and we do it with a lot of hope, that what we think is going to happen is going to happen. It doesn't always turn out that way. That fifty three thousand square foot building might be coming off this complex, you know, with IBM. I don't know that, you know, I, I have no idea what it might or might not become, you know, but I do know that, that, that the developers aren't being willy-nilly in terms of what they're trying to create. Um, you know, there is a difference between the development stage of rezoning with the intention of maybe I'm going to sell it, packaging it, and then there's the actual, I want to build this. And I believe this developer said, I want to build this, this is not a package deal saying, I want to go with this land so that I can turn around and sell it for five million dollars and I go, you know, half a million dollars invested in. So, I, I, to, to me, this is, uh, a project that, um, is needed in our area. I think it's falls right inside of what we say we want, uh, and I think it has to again, take the tax base from ninety three and a half percent, just maybe a little bit further down the road. Uh, so that we're a little closer to the eighty five percent world. Um, and I, I, you know, I'm excited about the project and I think it's, I think the applicant deserves a lot of credit for how he works so closely with the community trying to make it happen. I do think that it's, you know, as he himself says, you know, you can't get the guarantees, a lot of people won't even talk to you until you get to the point where you're actually site ready. Um, because they're looking for that. If, if a grocery store has a room in there, I guarantee you that, that, that piece of property will be listed, you know, on Virginia's eat appetite, as, you know, a prime spot for another business to come into that site ready or, I mean, I had ready to at that point in time. So, that's, that's where I'm at.
I'm, uh, much more, would much more like to see more business development and more housing, we go over three hundred units coming on the corner of that colonial circle. And, you know, this right now could be converted to R three, and we would have more housing. And we need more business, and I would support this as a potential for us to go forward in business.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good, um, I was just thinking about urgent care. Uh, my family uses urgent care, did two or three times this year. Um, I also serve on a committee that looks at the health issues of all the counties. Some of your top people at, um, Martha Jefferson, University of Virginia, all kind of health areas, Legion Ten, all over, they study every county. And Atlantic County is lacking in medical care. We don't have enough doctors. It is a blessing that the young lady, the nurse practitioners, I don't get you free. Um, we're talking about maybe you won't get enough nurses into, into urgent care or doctors and et cetera. Um, your nurse practitioners is now opening up their own facilities. They have to serve, I think, five years with a doctor, and then they can open up, and service the, the public. Um, the, uh, alcohol, uh, family medicine that I've been attending since the eighties. Uh, all of my providers, health providers are nurse practitioners, working under the head doctor. So for me, health is a real issue. Our people, I mean, in my district, we have to, we go back and have, we may go to Central Virginia back and have. Um, they, uh, doctor involved in is working part-time. Uh, there's one, the, the, the young man that works with him, I think, has moved over to that climate show. We have a great need for, um, uh, doctors in our area. And I think urgent care is, is a good thing and, um, we had to go all the way up to Pantop and sit and wait, and they do a good job. And I would love to see us have our ideas. I, I just listening to everyone, I just have a lot of, I just have confidence that this, this is what we need. Um, and I, I, you know, and I talked to her, the business women, I mean, that's a powerful group. And they need places where they can have their businesses. We've even talked about the right end, come home eventually, having business affairs. Saturday, I had someone who was talking about, uh, going to Saturday, I was like, that is a very nice little business there. I had to get on off that nearly, and saw the antique shops and, um, the clothes shops and people doing stink street work right there on the spot. And that's a little quaintness, I think, that we need, so. I'm in support, I would like to see it happen.
Alright, well, I'm going to be very short. I told a story to all the children when I do behind wheel, number twenty seven means something to them. Twenty seven is the number of kids that I've taught, that I've had to deal with that died out in the thorac drug overdose, oh. And we definitely need medical care for them as quick as we can get it. So that, I pray that's what has come there. People can sit there and figure it out, maybe won't. Losing young people, old people, anybody, especially young people, major teacher. That hurts. Anyway.
You can't come here, you know, such a reason, and you can't have a chance.
Well, that, that was going to be one, one last comment I was going to say, if, if it's not built, they can't move them to, or go into.
If I can, just a couple of responses, that it's, that they actually are very much in the practice of going through the zoning process with those medical facilities, um, once they determine where they should be and what they want. And I'm not at all against, I, I think especially because of the, much of the age group around Lake Monticello, um, it's especially, I, I Um, it's especially, I, I support the, the need for. Um. And I just, all I'm looking to do is. Uh, up and sure the citizens are stakeholders, stockholders. That what they bought into has more tied to it, uh, that, that's what they're gonna get and, um. Yeah, as you said, Tony, I, I take risks in business. But in this case, um, the people who've entered and asked to partner in, buy into it. And we're the group deciding whether the, the, Savannah County becomes a partner in this endeavor. And that's not in my personal business world and so I'm just trying to protect the interest of those. Stakeholders that have said, here's what we want, seventeen times in the staff report, it talks about that medical facility. If, I, I just don't want to pass something. That I have notable concern that that's not gonna come because then we're really just giving somewhat random B ones on. And, um.
Well, I can't hear, I can't hear thinking move on, but to borrow this. So I will have to react back and forth.
All right, do we have a motion?
Our board supervisors approve ZMP twenty-two oh three, Wolf Pack Properties LLC. The request to condition rezon for A one general agricultural. To be one general business owner in the district of thirty-five plus or minus acres, acts half nine, section eight. Parcells eleven, eleven B, eleven C, eleven D, eleven F, and eleven G. Along with the proper stated August third, twenty twenty-two.
Motion made on the secret second by this, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abode.
Aye.
And the chair. Like I said, I was thinking about to burn, I'm gonna vote, no, uh, no. So it passes three to two. I'm definitely not against it, but I don't think that.
Me either.
You know, like I said. All right, so we'll move on with the next one, V, ZTA twenty-two oh one, commercial users, Doug Mau. Be safe, one home votes.
Good evening again, um, chairman, chair and members of the board. Um, these commercial agencies are a lot of small businesses and that, um, we're trying to be. Put it into the room where it's showing. Start off with the, um. Agricultural enterprise definition, this is only an adjustment to make it more specific. And helpful and the agricultural enterprise, um. Basically has related uses, um. That right now winery and other similar facilities, um, farm brewery, cider, distillery, beater and. There's a lot of times people own a winery. Um, they add some of these other type of, um, lines of spirits and, and. Other types of opportunities for them to have on their farm or, um, also available or teaching. Along the same lines, the current area, the shopping center is, or restaurants are located. Um. A brew pub is an opportunity for a restaurant to have their own craft brewery. Um, inside of their bar or area of their restaurant as accessory use. Um, for consumption on rice, that's what most likely with the food that's served. Microbrewery is a part of their definition. Um, that is then choose, um, all of the assets of. Um, the production of, um, packaging of all peppers without all content. We specifically do not have any of the definitions being specific on number of barrels, number of. Um, you know, types of amount that they're being brewed because so often, um. For the last five or ten years, you know, somebody is changing this, so we actually went into. Um, trying to keep it very general, so the microbrewers are licensed by the department, not all, um, nervous and whole. And that's it would fall under the requirements code in your other applicable laws. Other organizations that we looked at preparing these, um, twenty twenty-two, we chose to not. Limit it to the number of barrels under fifteen thousand, over fifteen thousand. Uh, data center, this is one that you all know, um, Northern Virginia is slightly, we're all using another run out of space and also running out of. Um, power supply on our transmission, so we would like to actually profit and locate some data centers here and. Um, so basically what this is, is a, is a facility. Use primarily for management of processing, storing, transmission, faxing, promotion of digital. Housing, computer, network equipment, servers, systems and other associated components. Um, related to that, um, digital data operations. Second part of the definition, the facility, um, also included accessory, these are area where power. Cooling and storage facilities, utility cell stations and other associated infrastructure, sports operations. Um, which typically comes along, uh, with the data center. So those, those type things would still come before you all, utility cell stations, still the major utility. Um, but that would be located, um, typically like what you've seen with soul facility, it's both in that city. Uh, seated at substation. Um, emergency center, um. Set mention came directly from Eastern County, it's always, um, facility that offers the same level of service offered at the hospital emergency room. Be sacked twenty-four hours a day, three to six days a year, including weekends, holidays, and during equal weather. That, that emergency center will be able to accept, uh, ambulance transports and have notable capabilities. And in the definition, both important helicopter name and takeoff areas, crew just given that. And or here we call four areas because, um, a lot of times some of these facilities will come in and. Zone an emergency center or even a hospital, um, not have the way that. Then facility. You all have seen or heard, um, a lot of wedding facilities, venues. Um, this place of a definition, the key thing that you will see that we've stressed is that, um. Right now you currently have, um, average gathering, which is, uh, two hundred persons or more. And the event facility definition, we're looking at less than two hundred people, really, and most event facilities are usually under a hundred. Especially contain and load building. So what is this, a place of public assembly, used primarily as a facility for other functions, including what not limited to. Weddings, receptions, banquets, and ceremonies, meetings or conferences. Um, the event facility may be located in a building or ten, or be in an unprogrammed gathering. Um, less than two hundred people. The event facility is a place, the key part here is that charges appear requires a compensation to use the space. Or charges an entrance fee. Um, or other fee for using facilities related to that, um, operation. What it is not is a facility exclusively used by members of groups such as civic. Or service, the panel, and things like F O P lodges. Not included in the seven, the lodge definitions, they kind of have, stand upon that on the next slide. So neither of these two definitions that you have in the zoning warnings will be an event, so a lodge is a kernel, F O P lodge. Um, urgent love, um, any of those type of facilities. Um, that's not where events, so it can be operated. Out of gathering again is over, over two hundred people, um. It's like a junior locking festival aimed to, to like, uh, Buzzard Park along the, or Essentia. Um, like you have, um, in some of the campus grounds here. Um, so neither of these definitions or events, so the key thing I would wanna have people focus on is that is. Um, for compensation, particularly to private events. Or other type of events that, um, you're invited to be in my country of this. One of the last two ones that we're really, um, wanting to stress on, two fifty-four. Um, machinery sales and service, we don't have anywhere that anyone can actually sell on a book. All right. So this definition would allow, um, sale and service machinery such as, um, unnecessary limited to be barn crackers. Other similarity, such as backers, bulldozers, four person together with those attachments and. Such machinery, a combine, harvester, mower, where we go, we go up Route fifteen, we go on county parks, where we go. We can allow to Fisherville, out towards Lee's rural area and Hardestine to change where the book. Um, other, other opportunities to the eastern region. So machinery sales and service operator includes an asset that they could locate on two fifty, yes, or I'm sorry, have the definition that covers that. Um, so he's holding now, um, all these people are actually, um, easily meeting the definitions to be implemented. So that they can start their business and come to us either through a special use program process for these. Last one, one of them tried two years ago, um, the Ableton Town Facility. Um, yeah, this facility is not a junkyard, it's not a trap yard. Um, it is a facility, um, for temporary screen storage, applicable, or in how. To be claimed by their title holders or agents. For those vehicles that are waiting to turn his claims adjustments, so about ninety percent of that time is the turn is fine. Harder than accidents, so the slot, put there, your claim adjuster comes and looks at it. And within thirty days, they're less than out there at the body shop or out of there to the junkyard somewhere else. Not to be sore in the vehicle house still. So you, you all may remember or asked, um, where are our towing operators now? A lot of them usually have a repair service. Um, with the, in such your use, um, it says homes. So that's, that's the older, um, process. And this, we have a couple of brackets to show you, this is the original Texaco tow truck. We have a crowd fifteen and two fifty. That took a drop, transformed into this modern rollback, which is most of the vehicles that are used for tow trucks now. Um, it gets the awful of the road that, um, traveling, so there's no damage to the roads. With a transmission differential rating as a speed code. Just I wanna smelt it and not being able to harm anything or harming other people's. Um, they're very extensive vehicles, um, so people that own those are really interested in maintaining the quality of operation. So, the Ableton Town facilities, um, that could be used for, um. And again, this zoning ordinance for the next one years, if the county ever want to town vehicles that were not named that, that the Ableton Town facility. Will be available for that creditor or that person that will be tasked to doing that. Um, but most of them are private vehicle operators temporarily sort these damaged vehicles, get them out of the roadway. The state police and the sheriff department and then get people to, um, take care of them with their charts. That's all I have for you. Um, a lot of these uses, um, that we are practical voting for tonight. Uh, planning commission, I recommended this request, um, wholeheartedly. Um, for these zoning test amendments. And like I said, a lot of the ones that we have for you tonight, um. Tomorrow and Friday, people are gonna file and looking at applications. Or starting up, there isn't, so we just, just killing this. I have any questions, so now.
Any question? So, what was the motivation behind introducing all these? Like you said, some businesses are, or some businesses you say are waiting. Um. So today, there's nothing in our zoning that would, that would allow us to approve something, is that correct? So no matter how much we wanted, there's ones in there that our, our system, for lack of a better term, or policies and procedures. Wouldn't allow us to.
Yeah, it was clear, a lot of these uses are, um. New uses to, to them more instances, there are new uses to the market. Um, group hubs, for instance, it didn't exist five or ten years ago. Um, everyone, the other key thing that we want you all to remember, we don't want microbrewers in industrial areas, that's where everyone wants to put them. And that takes up industrial space that can be used there. We want people to feel comfortable to go to a microbrewery in a commercial setting. And out on the patio or whatever, so you'll see a lot of the new ones, um, in the area in the region. There aren't one, not because they've changed. So a lot of these type things, um. Are, are ones that. We would actually, like I said, we did the Ableton Town facility a couple of years ago. Um, there's ones that keep coming back, people, Congress, people Jennifer and I and state now do this now, sorry. It's kind of, it's kind of like the version of, of selling out things with ordinance, so it can apply for. Um. Or in some cases, the ones that you put in here by right, people apply for a B, they're not going, they already have a B one. Shopping center pen space in mind, they go right in there and they open a group up. Oh. Like within the month.
I, I, I have no point, I'm trying to make this, make that fun, I'm really just trying to learn. So I'm surprised that we can't. We couldn't decide on any one of those items that we want to allow that to come in.
Some of them you are willing to decide on because they're high threshold. So most of the Ableton Town facilities other than I T zone, you're gonna decide on this. So the planning mission award, all CBA one, so other than the I T situation, which we have very limited access to.
But I, but I mean, without it being, without us writing these in. Thanks, Mr. Weaver.
What you need to understand is if it doesn't say it's permitted, then it's not, whatever it is.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Two guys is not able, one's an inclusive, the other's an exclusive, I don't know which one's which. But we have the one that if it's not listed, it's not permitted. And other, if it's not excluded, you can do anything you want. We do not have that.
And most zoning ordinance, ninety percent of them are non-commissioned. Doesn't say you can do a taxi parlor itself, you can't do it.
Yeah, the, the other kind.
Other kind.
The other kind is kind of, kind of passable at this point, a lot of old ones.
Is that a billable thing?
In both cases, you're prescribing the user to permit it. Doing a general terms to a specific character.
Okay. Folks, hearing no other questions, we'll now open the public hearing. Please keep your comments to five minutes on top and direct it to the board, anyone who speaks, time.
Sue, you are sixty-eight forty, Tom, Jefferson Parkway, and I'm out of Virginia, thank you for. I'm concerned that these ordinance changes and definitions are coming up now before the. New comp plan is done. I thought we were waiting on these and a lot will come up after that. Um. I'm concerned that. If town facilities or vehicles, even with the special use permit. And that, um. Machinery, all machinery sales and service could go in a pasture. Could go in a wooded area, clear all the trees in A one land. We all know sometimes what happens with special use permits when people come forward, they're past. Um. The machinery sales and service and vehicle impact facilities are by special use permit in A one. Machinery sales and service are by right in the general business, B one. By special use permit, vehicle impact facilities are in the general business. By right, both of those. By right, both of those are in industrial one. By right. And industrial two, both of us. Why are they allowed by rights in those two places? Are we going to even consider putting them with a special use permit in the A one land? John Deere tractor facility in orange is in a B one, it was turned in Chevrolet. The genuine tractor in Charlottesville was next to the Hapica Associates. That's in the business area, they moved a little more. James River, John Deere's and Fisher's deal. That also is with the town and with business areas. Pilotes and Stuart's Wrath, there are towns, churches and businesses there. One now, it's also concerning. That. We've been working on these for eighteen months. And that one of the main reasons is there have been inquiries from certain people that want to put, for example, farm machinery sales and service. On two fifty in A one land, so we want to be ready so we can say yes to them. That's a little problem. Because just to spot reselling is found in the current comp plan, which is not supposed to be occurring. Um, I would say that this is. Spot zoning amendment. We must remember that zoning ordinances. Are very important to how this county ends up. Please put facilities where they should be, not just where a business or a person wants them to be. To accommodate them or for their benefit, also, we don't have people with things that are actually going on that are illegal maybe now. We don't want that, so we want to make it legal by changing this. What is done regarding clear slums, zoning and subdivision ordinances and their enforcement. Will either circulate around well into the future or will destroy it and its role character and its uniqueness. We've experienced these SGP requests before. Please consider where you put things and have them changed.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? I see three hands up online, Mr. Scott, if you want to speak.
Uh, yes, my name is Jim Scott, I live at one sixteen Tulip Drive in Palmira. And I agree with the woman's comments, absolutely. Business like this should be in an industrial area, not adjacent to a residential area. The noise from engine repair, body shop, that function would be disturbing to the neighborhood. My larger concern is when, if this is going to be a storage area for vehicles. What's the maximum capacity of the structures? And if they reach the maximum, maximum capacity for the structures, will there be vehicles and pounded vehicles out around on the land? It's, it's just not the right development for a residential area, too much noise, the potential for. Junk. Piling up outside the, the, the structures, thank you very much.
Sir. Mr. Adford.
Yes, hello again. First, I want to say thank you, all the people that participated, it was encouraging to hear more citizens come out. Around here this last few months, twelve months, working on many things and have sometimes little or no support. I know it's a hard and difficult thing for the county itself to deal with and you've got, being pulled both ways. I have all hopes for Mr. Jones and his Wolf Pack properties. It is a small concern, I hope we can lend itself more to a professional business park than some cheap retail parks, but. As a member of the community, I'll go there and I'll do my best, buy stuff too, I'm sure. But if we don't try to do something in a way that is smart and makes good business sense, it's going to take us down the roads people don't want to see. It's not that we can't grow, it's how we grow and how we approach it. And how we as professional people or retired professionals can try to provide some input into things that we'd like to. Facilitate for us and our neighbors, as well as support the businesses as they come out. So while I'm not totally in agree with everything here, I do have a lot of respect for him and I will definitely be a supporter to the community. Thank you all so much, I'll see you next month.
Thank you ma'am. Yes, sir, just think she started off, talk that I did and then transitioned.
I just want to make it clear to the record.
Yes, sir, it's kind of why you're here. And last one, hand us the evidence, Donna DiGuano.
Yeah, well, yeah, Donna DiGuano, one four eight Crete Merrill Drive, Palmira. I think words are actually escaping me at this point for all the people that stood up there and said, we don't want this, and yet you vote for it. I don't know.
Ma'am, ma'am, we're talking, that's the same thing Mr. Payne just said, we're talking about the. Zoning text amendment that's on the page now.
Oh, is this the, is this the SUP for that lovely metal shed area?
No, ma'am.
No, which?
No, ma'am, this is about zoning text amendment to our.
Oh.
So if you want to think about the passing of that, we have a second round of public comments.
Okay, it only says public here, okay, well, here, it does say it up at the top, but here's one thing I do want to say. Ms. Morris, of course, is correct, she's always correct, again, put her on your, somewhere in your county government as a citizen represented. They, they should be held off till after, after the new comprehensive plan is done. What, I do not understand how we go about businesses in this county, it's mystifying. And I will leave it at that, but you know, again, you guys are doing what you want, not what we need. Where you're just doing it in, in this way that doesn't make sense. But Ms. Morris is never incorrect, you should listen to this woman, she's very bright, she's lived here for eighty years, I think she knows a few things. So please wait on all of this until after the comp plan is done. Thank you, I'm annoyed.
Thank you ma'am. Is there anyone else which you can speak? I don't see anyone, so I will now close the public hearing. Any questions, you can return to the board.
Mr. Chairman, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
You all understand this. There's a whole bunch of uses here in a number of different districts. And this is not strictly an up and down thing, if you all. Don't like certain uses in certain districts, you can feel free to, not to approve, I'm not suggesting you should, but you can. So. If you want, you can approve one by one, although I wouldn't recommend that.
Man, I could pull up the, the document too, where we add or lose in the sections, that might be easier to see, so.
That's in the. What is in the ordinance?
Yeah, this was in the board package, so again, so under, we only put in sections of, of the zoning ordinance, for example, A one, general district A one. Any changes, uses permitted by special use permit, and as, as was discussed, event facilities, machinery, sales and service, microbrews. Vehicle impact facilities, those are the only ones that were added to the, to the A one, my special use permit, all there's nothing in A one that we added that was fire. So the board says that we don't want one of those additions into that particular section, we can do that, and we can go down through every, every section, and again, this was in.
The ordinance itself looks like that. This is, this is very easy to read. That's all succinctly in the draft ordinance.
So what is the argument for? I mean, I can understand, say, my career is maybe along the lines. Certainly, I can see machinery sales and service as a possibility, but what it is really arguing for, not going to do it on A one, versus having to go through the process of. You know, rezone into, into B one, whatever, that's that.
So Mr. Ryan, basically. What's another figure to talk about in full blown B one zoning? If you have a property owner, who wants to be a farm clerk and machinery sales and service. And he's a small business owner, he has to go full on B ones, he has to use. He's paying a lot higher taxes than was explained described earlier. On two fifty, he's property, but he only needs one use, one use only. He can come to you all or anyone, not to go to a rezone, he can just go to the same project. And get the conditions applied for his equipment. For instance, the gentleman who wants to do it, he's an office from the element, he knows the rules of the regulations and business of how he wants to do. That have a business, that's all he wants, he doesn't want to do, you know, office building that he want. Or any other, he's just an asshole, machinery sales and services. If he resumes to a B one, there are reasons to be setbacks, which is the benefit. And he can do that, because the setbacks are greater. So there, there are benefits and drawbacks for a property owners. So we want to have options for them, someone wants to resume to B one and have lesser B one setbacks. On a small piece of property, that will be beneficial. Someone owns A one, and all they want to do is that have a use. And that's the only thing that Mr. Chair and Mr. Evans taxes on, that special use permit. Willing. So those are some of the benefits that we could probably work for. Working with Mr. Morris, let your, no, we're not running individuals to go into a harmful field. And they're meaning the baby news have been in the building with fifty to sell that equipment or leases it or rented.
Well, some of these, some of these facilities, especially use permit, would maybe be more envisioned on like a two fifty or a fifteen or maybe more of a. I mean, there's got to be traffic there, I mean, it's.
So all the ones that do it, do it.
Yeah.
And the key thing for us, for equipment and tow car operators, they need beyond major orders. You don't want people pulling out of a wrecker operator, out of a, back of four half lane. On the U of R nine, and ten is for tow car operators to be on the circle or sixty four, fifteen. And then farm equipment sales, all the ones that this is more attention, yeah, well, how they give it to the port, and that's all we want.
And again, for these, you know, stuff, which you all know, has to go to planning mission for their recommendation and then come to the board for their final.
I'm just missing what determines which ones we allow. Tonight to go through zoning business wise and which ones we don't, and how we determine that. So there's plenty of them, plenty of businesses that we're not going to allow somebody to say. Because it's just on their land on, in an A one area, since they're just going to do that business in the shopping center, we're still not going to let them open up a business supporting type there, correct?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So how do we determine, how do we, how do we determine when we require, which businesses we require them to be one for and which ones we don't?
You look at the orders. And if you. I mean, if you're just coming, absolutely cold on, you take a zoning order and you look down every, every district, because every use permitted is listed in this. And you get to what you want. And that's where, that's what's available, if you want to do something else. Then you have to look for it somewhere else in the orders. You know, an example of that might be, and I'm making this up, but it, it might be that. You have. You have a piece of A one property that you want to leave A one. And you want to have machinery sales and service, again, this is hypothetical, love. But if this. Port is not available to allow that, then you have to go somewhere else, and probably at B one, possibly in Y one. So that's where, that's where you might have, where you want to go.
You know, a little, like looking at, you know, would you see something like this as maybe like a, a kid's store area along, you know, going down six four in Scottsville, or maybe like. Or ten, ten store, or like, ten store maybe less, I mean, like I said, some people are looking at more. Larger thoroughfares from a traffic standpoint, so, you know, maybe you, maybe there's one in. Fork Union or something like that, that was, that was kind of the thought.
Thinking on machinery sales, but machinery sales, you're talking about tractors, harvesters and combine things like that, they're physically big. And I don't expect that you're going to be, look very well on a piece of land on, on, on Salem Church Road. Just for example, on the back road, you don't want to have a twelve wide piece of machinery being towed down now. On a regular basis.
The worst thing is to allow them, right?
Well, you know, I mentioned, and you might say, this is appropriate in A one, it's some place, but it's not perfectly clear. Because, because the infrastructure is very crap.
It's maybe appropriate on six, on.
In A one, Eric Barstool is inside our road there. Senator, you said it's on two fifty. I'm guessing that's our. Yeah, it's a land profit, it's certainly worth it. I mean, that's what we're looking for, did it happen?
The only reason I use this machine is because it's one that obviously has to have a major road. Because it just handles, handles machinery, you know. So that means you got all the same one property served by. Survived. Two rivers, where I live, you can't have that, we have a state road, but you do not want to put machinery out in the. Farm tractor and stuff like that, do a soul on that road, so you, you would not allow that. I'd say you probably wouldn't allow that, but you get an equal sized piece of property, hundred acres long. For example, two fifty, two fifty is a main road, and it's designed with very heavy track, it's got a hundred foot, sometimes some places got two hundred foot mile. So. You, you mentioned this before, you all mentioned this before, when you're talking with. Six sixteen and fifty three. Six sixteen is, is small and curvy. But it has one advantage over fifty three, that's fifty three, effectively cannot be expanded. Certainly can't be expanded after you get it out. So that, that's how, that's the kind of analysis you use.
But, but it's, it's, we're choosing which. Which types of businesses will have to have, resulting which ones won't, correct? I'm not saying good writer.
You've got, if you look at the, if you look at the, the sections, various sections of zoning, what you see is a state of the tenth for each district. And it's, it's going to, in, in A one, for example, it's going to emphasize agriculture and open space and rural uses and. Right out there, the shuttling, judicur, and stuff like that. That's not what you see in, in I two. I two is specifically designed for heavy industries that may be, may present. Quote unquote nuisance problems to neighbors. So that's, you use that kind of analysis, Mr. Miles is a professional in investment, he's done this. You're not bound by this, but you should have the benefit of this, when you think about it.
There are only two uses, any of these listed that have problem enough, they'll have an order one. Rupus and that's. Someone's going to file an operation for them and go into a tenant space and a shopping center or a repo. And maybe even be inside an existing restaurant, and the other one is they have, hopefully all of those one that's. How to ask. Go by a site plan, build a building, go need structure. Other than that, all the other uses pretty much are special use permit, one is going to take a lot of. Other than that, all the other uses pretty much, or especially these for that, or one is gonna take a lot of, to be built. Even on.
I, I'll just add one other item, I'm concerned about the inlay yards, because. I mean, it, a- as, as you mentioned. The majority of that's gonna be the police wanting it off the road, which means it was gonna wreck. So whether you call a junkyard or a place with wrecked cars. Um, it sounds like to me that can come up. Near some stuff that we might find undesirable for it to come up.
Yeah, yeah, and, and again, I mean, you know, we put this motion together, and so if the board feels that there's one thing that maybe they just, as the board doesn't feel belongs. That, you know, as you're saying, if you feel that vehicle inbound facility doesn't belong in A one by special use permit, well then.
And.
Well, remember too, that's what it is, in special use permit, if you have the ability to find. Exactly what you want to look like, you know. You can basically say. It's gonna be entirely covered with fence and that's that. But it, but that's gonna come, so. They don't do that, then it really costs.
This law is our, we have nature and general indication, you can classify, not vehicles have nature. They can only put a pinbar, and they don't, they get a lot of, they didn't get a lot of.
We've all, uh, this, this release, she asked, one man about. Uh, I think the chair's gonna say that presents a different problem. Uh, because. The layback something. Typically, it's gotta be secure storage. Now, there, I'm not talking about the brick and the highway, have to. That would be for this, for, you know, shooting. Some of it.
They have their legal also.
And they have to possess.
And see that they would have to apply, the county industry would have to apply, have, I'm sure. I think it's like how it can give.
Well.
Well, what I'm saying is, storage of any inbound facility, if all is named, whether it's a county, or one, it wouldn't be a state, right?
I don't, I don't agree with that. The county is not subject to a telephone. But on the other hand. It's your account.
Yeah, we don't want to put ourselves. I, I'm just, I, I wouldn't want to have acre wrecked cars. Coming in beside me out somewhere in the one. When you guys, you know, pull that one. As I said, we can pull one, we can pull more than one.
Are we pulling, um, where I'm a little.
A one, the A one down.
All of this went through the. Plan commission.
Yes.
All the plan, it's been, all these, and approved or. That is the, the company. I think it was four one.
Five, five minutes, five.
All right, it's I, it's any portal. Mr. Jimmer was going to pass.
Forty, forty or one. Okay, so, so, I, we just heard all those, these, uh, we probably.
Well, we, i- i- this is an A one special use permit, so it become before the planning commission and the board, and we can say, no, we don't want, want this in this area, and it doesn't get its special use permit. So you still be not making a priority.
Only one priority is we're gonna have to see it in I two, and. So. I do know anything I have way off.
All right, so, anyone, anyone else? Do we have one?
We're gonna have to go through all those.
Uh, if you, if you're intended to have it amended the way it's written. You know, I think all you need to do is reference the orders.
Orders, changes, amendments.
Maybe read the first line and then say.
It's this thing.
So, so if my, if, if I, if I could not support the vehicle inbound facilities. Then I'm gonna be voting against the entire.
Yeah.
I'm saying, if, if it's a motion, what I'm understanding, a motion.
You could make a motion not to approve it. There's a lot of ways to do it.
Oh, and treat that, and then that would be excluded from the next motion.
You made a motion that said, for example, I do not want to have inbound laws in A three. You make the motion, somebody else seconds it, and it passes, then that's gonna come out of this motion.
That's one, okay. I make a motion to not have inbound facilities in A one. We have a second.
You said in the ordinance or do you mean in A one? A one. But he said the order, right?
I said in A one, but now you got me. Thinking about it.
Well, I understood, I understood his motion.
In the ordinance of amendments.
I understood the saying, he said that he didn't want vehicle impact, so in, in A one by special use permit.
Okay.
That.
Correct. We have a second. Awesome. The motion made by Mr. Perry, I'll take it by Mr. Old Ryan, all in favor say aye. Uh. Opposed?
I oppose.
Chair of both time, motion passes for one. All righty, now the speakers. Everyone, everyone excluding.
Fine.
Mr. Perry, I'll.
No, he said.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Um, how did you say this motion must be read?
Read the first line, name of the.
That's fine, everything, everything else, it's in the, the ten years, it hasn't sit out in your.
Okay.
Yeah.
I move forward to supervise with the Doc Arden, B T eight twenty-two one. And ordinance for land factor twenty-two zoning and the county code. The section two nine county code section twenty-two, twenty. Twenty-two dash, twenty dash one, C two. In sections twenty-two dash, twenty-two dash one, transmended.
Without the vehicle.
The vehicle empowerment facilities.
In A one.
One, so in section twenty-two dash four dash two point.
Okay, you have a second, is that okay?
Yes.
The motion made by the speakers, taken by the speaker, all in favor, say aye. Uh. Opposed? Chair of both time, motion passes. Next up is.
I'll do this one before you.
See, third amendment to structure lease agreement with used singular wireless PCS LLC, Mr. Paul.
So again, now we have the, now you have a monopole, it's, we lease out our monopole, cell provider, put the equipment on it. Um, the tenant in new singular wireless wants to make adjustments to the monopole space and on the ground space. So therefore, they're, they're changing their space requirements, um. And so whenever we do that, um, you know, we're required for Virginia Code fifteen point two dash seven three four. Again, we're dealing with a purchase, sale, exchange, or lease real property by the county, a public hearing required. Uh, again, this amendment, uh, would increase the monthly rent for the county by five hundred dollars a month. In order to be a three hundred, sorry, a three percent increase, uh, that's already established in the original rule, so.
Oh, hang on, guys, they just read. We talked so long and forgot we did not do public hearing. I don't know. We did? Yes, we did, yes, we did.
Yeah.
Yes. Cause that's one thing I'm talking about. So, we were good, we were good.
Yes, we did, then there are some.
They're saying, oh, oh, yeah. Miss. The thing, we had three speakers on line.
Thank you for being here.
Okay.
Making sure I'm not. True enough, appreciate it, that's why. I'm telling you why you get a time problem. I'm promising you, I'll make the one. So, okay, go back and just go with it, Mr. Paul.
I don't know, I mean, that's, that's the long and short of it, okay?
I'm hearing it, uh.
Well, we have to go to a public hearing off the board's question.
That's what I'm doing, getting back to the board. Okay, I will now. Hearing none, we will open the public hearing, please keep your comments to five minutes on topic directly to the board, is anyone wish to speak this time? No one in the room, is there anyone online? I see no one online, I will now close the public hearing. Uh, do we have any more comments or questions? Uh, do we have? Uh, Mr. Paul, I'm sorry, Mr. Paul, I didn't ask you your hand, I was looking.
That's okay, cause I couldn't find the button to put my hand up. Now, is this, this is an open area, no, no attachments, we can speak.
No, ma'am, this is, this is another public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Donna DiGwano, one four eight Crete Merrill Drive. I find it very disconcerting that this board is pushing us solely and squarely at this end of the county towards a suburb. I am very upset that you.
Hey, Miss, Miss DiGwano. This is not a public comment, ma'am, this one is.
I, I think, I think your response was confusing to her.
Well, I mean, it. Yeah, no, this is.
Yeah.
Okay, then I'll wait till whenever, just let me know when, when it is time. Thank you, bye.
The second one will be right before we go into close meeting, ma'am.
Okay, I'll wait.
All right. Um. Is there, in the scene, no one wish to speak this time, I'll now close public hearing. Uh, any other questions, considering from the board?
I move forward to arrive as approved, third amendment to structure lease agreement, counter problem with new singular wireless PCS LLC. LLC for purposes of allowing AT&T install generator, lease additional ground space, therefore, as described in the amendment. And further authorized county administrative tasks to be driven set up to deliver last.
Second, motion made by Mr. Old Ryan, second by Mr. Paul, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair of both tie, motion passes, we will now move forward with action matters. Did y'all talk about, uh, F, letting them know what you're getting and meaning?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So F is no longer on the list, D, career development certification bank. This is red way master cert, court clerk, and Mr. Sheridan, master commissioner of revenue. I need to tell you all, if anybody's listening. My email is Mike Sheridan at Louisiana County dot org. Uh, my brother was part of the county government long before I was, and he took him, Sheridan. I just wanted to make sure I clarified it, Mr. Sheridan. But, but he, he, he took, he took him, Sheridan, and.
Then you wouldn't have this, something.
Poor Andrew Sheridan. That's what's hurting me now. But, Sheridan is correct, you send it to M. Sheridan, it comes to the commissioner. Not horse.
Grabbing, sending you all this week.
I tried to correct them all, it's not just. As a citizen, it's pretty only two boys there. Get all the cookies.
That's funny.
Well, there's, there's one gentleman that didn't figure it out until about a year ago.
Oh.
Thank you, you make, make. We like. Uh, we've done it very, 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 at the time, we know it's, yeah, we didn't like. Y'all kind of allowed to fish a couple weeks ago, that we were developing programs that, not needing to get up, it's right in mind, which. So we did, uh, all by the time it was lost. There was a, uh. At our birthplace, at that time, I hope y'all hear this tonight, actually allowed only for, uh. Authorized convoy division to receive some additional funding, if you complete a very intensive, multi-year program for career development. So without very much to do, what y'all asked us to do, to do was go and come back. And there was some changes that we would make, it's applicable to all three types of employees that we have. Convoy group that are funded. Convoy group that are unbunded, and then those that are not convoy group, the county funded entirely. So that's what this has been, and it's just a change, it's a, we've developed to the personnel plan. That. That allows all three of those. You know, types of employees, all basically all folks that are in, uh, this February, so not, so. This, uh, men are, to receive this additional computer development funding. And you can see it's a fifteen thousand dollar bump, it's not a great, great deal. But it allows all of our employees that have reached that certification to receive that money. Initially, and also for subsequent years provided a. Re-certification, because you just don't get it and it's always much. So it's an ongoing loss, we greatly appreciate your support, you know, this. The two motions, one is approved it, and the second one is independently amend the county, um, personnel plan to the brand of. Word in place, so they can tell it all three types of employees.
Let, let me, Mr. Pratt, that, motion two is the money piece. Yeah, the money. So, so, so really, just in short notice, if, if, if the board approves this, we are gonna have to come back with personnel policy addition, just to add that. But the board wanted to see what it was gonna cost for three offices, and so motion one basically addresses that, and then motion two is where the money.
All right.
That's it, now show, and we're, we're gonna answer any questions.
All right. Are there any questions?
Is it annually?
Yeah, right. For those that it continues to re-certify, and you can't lose your certification if you don't, uh, do what you want to.
Prevents the re-certification in case.
Uh, classes, mild, yes, ma'am, and, and independence, it's, it's, uh. This is creating annual confidence, it's, it's, you can't just do it online.
Yeah, and I noticed that, um, our HR person has to certify it.
Yes, ma'am, uh, see, I've had with myself, with, whoever, we have to certify, and. That I will stay at, and it's not just ours. And we don't run for them, run by, they come officially, they actually do the certification for all of them.
And, and the people at the end of the list, uh, as they hit the third year. Uh, they will also be paid more?
Yes, ma'am, if, if they complete the certification and become master deputy, uh, first quarter deputy commissioner, deputy treasurer, they will then pick up. Uh, at the same rate for their commensurate, uh, staff position, you know, they have been wanting to do that.
And, and why doesn't the, um, state pick up with all of them?
Well, state, if only the question, as a general assembly, a lot stood the convoy to, to the first thought. And they simply don't give them enough money to cover all the participants in re-certification, uh.
The last year, you don't get the money.
Correct.
Last year, you don't get the money.
You currently are on the way to, and so we were, uh, looking at the, uh, to the ticket and stuff, the votes to me, as, that has. This change would do that, whether you are accountable, the third person, or the just the additional person, the county that's approved.
And we talked about that with convoy is.
Convoy is the one that.
Well, and, and as far as convoy through positions. Nobody knows, it's very Android, correct?
It is correct, and it can change, you know, everybody, you know, cycle of generals, and we give it. And so it can change depending on whether you say, well, we're good or, or we're not.
To.
This, this guarantee there, folks, if they pursue this third passion, which is a multi-year certification, that's three years minimum. That they can, they can have some benefits from the education that they. Make them a lot higher, or they're, uh, having more well-rounded, uh, deputy and S F, and, and, uh, true that's the value. To the behalf of seeking higher catching and that's what it is. Uh, it's just rewarding people as long as that's the thing that we need to, you know, more attention.
I, I assume, just to be clear, if they are all receiving this, this compensation from a convoy, they are now receiving that point here.
Well, we're talking the one down there. We get it.
They, we did make some portion of that, I do, this would allow. This, this fact, we should have taken up the people, bring them up to the number. Uh, if they have a gap, any convoy would, and again, it's. It's only fifteen thousand, three hundred three, that's not expected to change a great deal, uh, this would be everyone, this federal office is certified. And I have one additional person, that, that, uh, she will be certified, uh, that has been working well by. Four one July next month, and that would be everyone in my office, and she pointed out, we're very due. Contribute often in the convoy to have all of their staff is certified, uh, half of the deputy, plus of course, or half of the deputy mission. But we've been there, a time or two, but if you lose time, it takes at least three years to get an input back. And, uh, it's all, it's, that is the department that y'all call, it's a, it's a quite a chain, and it's small, we'd like to see a lot of. All of us have, not just the convoy. We'd like to see a product all of our staff, not just the combo for.
Any questions? Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. Do you have a motion?
And I want to commend Tricia for bringing this to our attention and something that affected the moral of the mind.
And, and you see ninety-eight and fifty-five. And, uh, thank Minister Redway's office has more employees than, than any of the three. And so even if, hoping the treasury will all, they'll all become master. Treasure and still would, you know, this is a balance. I don't know. All right. Do you have a motion?
I don't.
I move the board supervisors approve the implementation of compensation board's career development certification pay plan. For the offices of the circle circuit court, the treasurer and commissioner revenue. And removing the qualification of the position needed to be compensation board funded. The revised plan is that assumes that each masters certified constitutional officer and staff member receive a nine point three percent. Salary certification that is with the amount to be determined by the compensation board annually. And based on the minimum salary set for the respective staff position. Of the compensation board's annual classification and pay plan for support personnel. For each per, uh, respective office, the total estimated F Y twenty-three additional personnel costs to the county of fifteen thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars.
Yes. Okay, I'm motion made by this fair child taken by Mr. O'Brien, all favors say five, I say aye. Both chair votes aye, motion number two.
I move the board supervisors approve a budget transfer of fifteen thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars in the board supervisor's contingency. With nine thousand eight hundred twenty-five for the clerk of the circuit court's office and five thousand five hundred sixty-eight. With the commissioner revenue's office to implement the revised career development certification paper.
Motion made by Mr. Fairchild, taken by Mr. O'Brien, all favors say five, I say aye. Both chair votes aye, motion passed by the table. Thank y'all very much for all y'all do. You're very well. E, an impression pay raise for sheriff's deputies in non-compensation board position. Chair pass.
Any questions?
That's a good. That is, I, I, that is a bad one.
I will, uh, this is part of the comp ward funded. The position that we currently have on comp ward. Uh, and started at three years. Now where does this become a duty? I have people that are all in comp ward right now, been in office for five, six years. Because they haven't been in the comp ward position on roster in that position. For one or three years, they didn't get that.
So they only count the years that they're in the comp ward.
The comp ward position, correct. Me, you would have been in comp ward.
Yeah.
We're, 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 we're. Not a pair of costs, but it's money that's going to act. This year, this year is a little, a lot more. And that was because of the increase, increase the starting salary of daddy, which brought in over fifty. Uh, there's like originating, there's compression, and then another thirty-seven. It was taken for, um, the oxygen increase. Uh, say, A goes to the fish. So all that will come back to the town. Any, any other questions?
And I will make my own motion.
I move the board to revise approved compression pay for the three non-compensation board funded deputy position qualifier. For the one hundred dollars of each year consecutive service over three years, which shows one thousand one hundred dollars each year. The funding account from the F Y one three or something.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, taken by Mr. Walker, all favors say aye. All both. Chair votes aye, motion passed by zero. And now we've done the orderly report. So we'll move forward consent agenda, H minutes of July sixth, twenty twenty-two, I minutes of August third, twenty twenty-two. We can pull, pull aye. Pull aye. J C R M F, Central Elementary Chivers, Mr. Tribble. K C R M F, Public Safety Building Five Ton. Building, excuse me, not building five, but a five-ton heat pump upgraded, Mr. Rachel. Is there anything anyone wants to pull?
There was something in the minutes of July sixth, I don't have it in front of me. When you talked about it, what, um, now and Tricia just talked about, you had one position, correct? You meant one position for the commissioner, right?
Like it was in the office?
Maybe it was. I was off.
It was in the last meeting.
It was our last week.
Well, since we're bringing that back a little back.
That will get. All righty, is anything, any, anything else anyone wants to pull? Do I have a motion that I accept and then again with minus aye?
I move the, we accept the consent agenda of minus aye.
Well, second. Motion made by Mr. Walker, taken by Mr. Seager, all favors say five, I say aye. Both chair votes aye, motion passed by zero. Next up is unfinished business, L S U P twenty-two oh one, Johnson and Company LLC, Mr. Miles.
Chairman Sheridan, due to the late hour, I'm just going to do a presentation. Um, to provide background information for anyone that's not been at all. So this is a special, um, useful minute request to be one of those seventy. When I contact short public. Plus my seventy, my seventeen, that I just made.
Yeah, again, that's rare.
Yeah, I heard about fifty-three next to the U D A, um, current edition on, on. Society layout that are just, um, part of, it's part of the conditions. And it's looking in, um, in our hand, the meeting finding area and neighboring cheese area, the recognition. Which in the one part of the. So the, the conditions that are currently, um, in there, there's actually a, those nine point four year old time. So the cycline that you saw, you saw it earlier was saying one that, um, the last week was, so maybe twenty-two, thirty-two. That it would need to fall cycline, which was, um, B N S, range service. That's a certain thing when you're earlier, maybe this plus. Um, lighting would be directed to Jason, not crew down. Direct toward Jesus properties and shadowing by their lighting, who is learning one is. Noise would be, even in compliance with chapter fifteen point one. Um, the county code, I don't think that, um, this, um, this scenario would be any noise compared to the outside, so we'd have people up here. Site should have been made to eat more than the inner. So there's a whole experience from all the right away on the way. The Jesus property is such a little cannon vision. You authorize us, county staff, to inspect at any time. Seven, considering, um, breaches of the conditions of our mansion and activity per look, um, with Jesus not. Um, eight is the one that we did have for our asset storage, um, heavy equipment or, or operations related with a contract authority that would be committed. So there's a starting facility that would have every book in there obviously to move the dirt and install the found agents. Um, so that has not included, um, storage, have everybody put a portal sharing. And then number nine. Yeah, part of the, uh, two digit mine. All right. Um, they are proposing, um, as the applicant in, in Chinatown engineering. Additional screening, so the screening that they, they will present to you all in the next part is, this is a, this is what I had at a. Um, proper condition number nine additional screening, which I believe six in total. Um, fence panels that are generally sixty, all a A P Y. On every planting, they have every planting that have followed requirements and ordinance, what's the ordinance apart, and then it can be planted. As ever being, um, planting the six, uh, five feet and high. Um, that, that would be provided up to be forty-eight feet of screen, six channels. And that shall be installed years of the property line, it's going to be on the property line, because the six foot security fence is going to be on the property. That shared with act number seventeen, section fifteen, parcel, section, Chinatown engineering, size, eight, all set up. This is one that's in the cheese, as you all, um, those who are carrying on the fifteen for this request, and that's to defer from law six, excuse me. I have any sharing questions, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I have a suggestion, you know. I think it's condition number four, nothing noise or. I'm obviously just adding phrase at the end of the sentence, said any noise shall comply with chapter fifteen point one of the Floridian, uh. Floridian county contingent code, as the city may be amended from time to time. And I'm particularly mindful of that because. Review complete, common features. Uh, we're referring you conference to men and to, you know, noise, those to endorsements. And what they're being doing, that it will be the one that controls, assuming. I was suggesting that.
Yes, can you elaborate some? A, a lot of concern has been, uh, expressed by neighbors to this. In, in, on a number of fronts, but one of those has been about contractor yard. Can, can. I, I had somebody say to me last weekend, I think that we heard some, to some extent about this this evening. About whether there'd be trucks coming in at all hours of the night. I think there was a perception that this is something that it's not. Can you define what's allowed in that and what are? Yes, ma'am. So from what I understand and working with the applicant, this requires, um, as an electrical contractor. Yes, band servicing. Or decline and wherever they are, they're bays. So, and most of the bands do not, um, pump to the property, you have to, I think, to be filled, refilled, supply, was to do. Take it home, upon, or out on the, off of the property, installing an electrical service work. So. The majority of this storage would be inside of. One of this facility, uh, building, buildings and facility. Um, and you would need to build the requirements through Mr. Wells to store and put in. Dealing with, um, non-legal items at the time, like all. So, so doesn't allow, if, let's say you sold the property, does it allow some sort of more industrial or, or heavier use? No, the, the condition eight that was on the screen earlier, that doesn't allow right now to store any of the.
It's a lot of.
One of the big things we call them, maybe truck coming in here too, you know. Uh, and I, and.
Which in his business as an electrician, of course, I don't see that happen, but, but some people are saying they have that concern. When they're thinking contractor yard, I think they're thinking delivery and stuff and.
Yeah, that's, that's an issue that. Mr. Miles has said, his capacity, don't even miss it. He ruled this used constitutes a contractor storage yard. Even though it could be entirely inside. Uh, so that issue you said, it is that, but it is that subject to limitation. What you're talking about, Fairchild, is the typical contractor storage yard would have things like, like, uh. Concrete fixtures and, and things like that. If he had anything like that, it would have to be inside.
Which is, if he sells it to someone else, somebody moving in there, do they also have to buy it back?
Yes.
That all the condition.
Yes. And me, that's not a contractor storage yard. He's not ready to be not what it is.
I think so. Mr. Mr. Seager, I'm, I'm not. I'm, I'm not going to tell you I disagree with you, but what I'm telling you is it's no longer today. Because Mr. Miles has ruled his capacity is only material. That it is a contractor storage, as above.
So if the man just said, okay, I'm not going to do a contractor storage yard.
He doesn't need to search for it at all.
And then it goes away.
Yes.
That's right. He did not.
He didn't have to do.
Does a man have to have a special use permit for this application? Um, if he chooses to do a contractor storage yard, then I think that the key thing that we're really working, which I've been hearing, is constitutional. If you want to have more possibility to have outside storage in the language. That's what we're after. And that's why I'm working with them on the fair application, you're speaking. It was to the fact that previously last year, the decision that actually the request was down to be one. Uh, this contract for, he definitely has a, for contractor employee, certainly moving along to the day. So what, what does the S U P allow, though, that in his particular uses, that, what's the change there? Or in, there's no, no people that are going to be, well, capable of, once built. I'm asking you, whether he has the S U P or he doesn't. What's affected by him getting that S U P that he wouldn't have if he didn't get the S U P? I honestly don't think he needs it, you know. Uh, it saves me that right now, from what he's described, that he's conditioning himself to be it. Can you put the picture back up?
So good.
Uh, propose. What would he do?
It has the screening there. And therefore, I, that's the chairman, yes, will have. The national office will have.
That's why I was thinking.
I think he wants, someone wants to come and represent that at all.
I don't know what to do.
The yellow is.
It is proposed. Somebody wanted to talk about that.
You can adjust the ship that way. We're now in the property, people is very agreed. Appreciate all what you guys have been buying for us. So the only change last time, did we turn certain about reading completely from the setup area? Actually, we added the reputation yellow, it is additional proper fence trees. In that area, with that particular concern. Uh, so it's not like a residential commercial type situation. It's not an ordinance required. Screening, but we have a division requiring, that it, I think, let me try to explain, so that I mean, you know, if you determine. I think if you determine that the electrical business. Uh, is a contractor storage yard effect.
That's, this is real late, Mr. Chairman, and that issue is set up. So we're going to need some assistance.
All right. And so we use S U P, point is, we use S U P. For John, here, operating business from the property. That's why I, uh, so that's going to be. Need that, and we pose a screening of.
Why do you think you need that if, if you're not going to be using that contractor storage yard?
Well, my, my question for all is, is it a term that you've been, that you've set up? All of the storage truck. Now, you didn't store anything outside. So the conditions would, in any future, uh, let's say, if they, that's a condition on the county area, he even not, he did not store X behaviors. Outside the property, all the stuff that's stored. In buildings.
So what I understand, Mr. Miles, to say is that if you drop the special use permit. You can go ahead and do what you want to do, anything.
But I couldn't do self storage, but I couldn't do my, I feel a bit as soon as I sell store because of the. Regulations in the guidelines and everything, I'm putting one on, so, because I'm a contractor and I don't want to put my, I feel a bit as in a building. That everything against being, I have a certain requirement to put them on.
That everything against being, I have a certain requirement to put them on business, and I always think it's kind of weird.
I don't think it's.
What is this located right now?
In and out of self work here. Like, I'm just.
Okay, I I agree with you, Mr. Sager, this is, this is a. It's a very tight bar. But it's not debated. It, because Mr. Miles has already ruled, designing the sphere, that what Mr. Johnson is proposing. Needs a special use permit.
But Mr. Miles is right, that you can leave without.
I think that's the main change prior to. Prior to the law, the attorney, he proposed that he made a change. Same, same aside.
One quick question. Not going to be something big. Could you send the buffer or leaving the trees there? Uh, see what buffer can write.
Right, right at the bottom there.
Right, you're saying, could you make the fence line along?
Yeah, make the fence line along. Well, it's just like three pounds. Just to cover the area where the people are sitting on the pad.
Yeah, I would love that. I need to screen the back of the building.
Well, no, no, no. Um, I'm talking about, yeah, the side of south, that's why I said probably. You're looking at three, two, three.
But I haven't computed because I all three, they're all way.
Well, are they going to save them?
Yeah, they're saying, they're saying they're going to keep them.
That's on the, that's on the.
Do you have to take some of the trees down?
Then it's, it's on the other property, so. Meaning that the buffer trees are.
I'm talking about from his buffer, that it, yeah, I'm saying, I'm looking at the. If it's.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just talking about.
The yellow here extending the fence this way towards south more.
Yeah.
But I guess what I'm. Great, he's offering, I guess what I'm saying is. If the trees aren't going to be there, just the way.
If the trees are going to be there, then why would you do that?
No, no, the tall trees aren't going to be there, just the lower landscape trees.
That's why you need a car now, and it looks like a new site, and you can't carve it out.
Right, things are not exact, it's all the long time.
I think it's going to be all trees that are in, why don't you say one movement to start now.
Absolutely. I think I heard earlier that this buffer fence is going to go on the property. Didn't I hear that? So. That, so there's trees, so the fence is going to be on this side of these, the the posts that you're talking about.
Well, no, I mean, you wouldn't have to do it though.
You might have to cut some of the trees down potentially, potentially, but I think we're, we're okay with that. I think if you clarify, if you want to take them down.
I just want. If it's open to the. Seeing there. Bring the fence down, or just take the scenery out. That's right. That's okay. It's, it's like I said, it's only one or two pounds, maybe twelve feet or. One sixteen.
Instead of fifty, the other concern is, it's kind of hard to. Figure this out, um, you know, just looking at, at from the standpoint. Uh, and having serving the the screening, you know, all the way around on the one side, and I understand. That there's probably no value to having a screening directly behind the blue line. And I, but I think it was sort of raised. You know, would you be able to see these buildings if you are on fifty three, you know, down the road? You know, I don't think you're going to be able to really see the buildings, if you're standing inside, shot in the center of stuff there. But if you're on fifty three, and you're driving out, or can see these large buildings, well, if you've got a screening here, you're not going to see it, but you don't have a screen. Covering the 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 first building, which is where you're going to operate, which I believe that is already going to have. Different type of material on it.
Cover twenty percent.
But then you have that second building. Right, that is there, technically a second and third building right there. The third building being set back, I don't necessarily see it, especially some of those trees that you have there. So it all, it almost seems to me that you want to have. Another three, or you know, whatever, sixteen, twenty feet of screening right there, to block the view.
How big is a small building? Thanks for what he's talking about. How long?
This one, this middle one?
The smaller one, no. But you have the other one right beside it, they're they're going to show from not only fifty three, but. Almost every parking space in the food line park. You will see some, some buildings. If you're, if you're part of down Food Line Park Lot, or you're not seeing what it's targeted up. You're in most of those parking spaces, you're going to be able to see the buildings to what I would say the left. Oh. Food line, uh, the the crediting inside.
Well, it's like, yeah, you know, obviously, each one of those buildings is maybe about fifty, fifty five feet long, or about five feet, just here in the corner, it'd be there, so, you know. That's, you know, but to my point is. If if he's going to keep the trees, and it's not going to have drug sales. I'd rather see more fencing go down over on that, and so that it's not visible necessarily. Uh. Fifty three slash.
Without that fencing at south, you absolutely will see those buildings. Yeah.
Um.
I think, I think he started out maybe not doing it there. Instead of swap.
No, no, I'm still saying you're keeping this one here, but you're talking about putting more fencing down over here, but you've got a tree there, so I don't really see where the value of fencing is at that point in time.
Well, that's why, that's why the trees are there, we don't, don't take the fence.
Right, but if you put another fifty feet right here. You know, then you're covering those two buildings.
Where the condition is written, in a court. Now, if you want to make that a disjunct, suit the concept if you can. I got my condition on.
Yeah. So, does that make sense to us then?
Yeah, I was saying, um.
And you live in the past, so I mean, you you.
Um, the thing that's in the building, honestly. When you go over to another building, you look at my name, you're going to see all the dungeons, there's a backup to all of this. Not most aesthetic would be, and we're already there. You see the retaining wall, it's kind of bad, you're going to, pretty tall.
Yeah.
And and the trees are going to be taller than that, my apartment was about ten foot tall. I don't think you're going to see much of it from that area, not on the south, like you said, yes, you're sticking on board with south, you will be able to see a little bit. But that's why we offer the actor screening, fencing to. They're going to be able to.
What tree go to the left side of food line, are you talking about it or do you mean?
You know, the pole.
I always, we had a picture of south, because I don't. These are on the ground, they're south.
You know, the patio is all on that, the patio is all that side, so there's.
I don't look that way, when it's.
Take, take all those oak trees down. If you take all those oak trees down, which is. What is, I think is going to happen, right, because you're going to bring your, your drive almost right to the property line. So if you take all those oak trees down, you're going to be looking at them.
I think if you look at where the pavement ends, and I'm just looking, going back, it looks like maybe right here, if he's saying he's keeping the trees up to the pavement. It's going to be around there potentially.
So you're keeping some of those oak trees?
I don't remember the name.
Okay, guys. Uh, I mean, my, my, I mean, my, the, 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 yeah. Many, many.
Make a motion.
My motion. Eight by the secret, second by the school, all big say. Both, chair both.
Sorry, I had to do that in eleven o'clock. Both being B one. He's going to bring. His drive area, correct if I'm wrong, right up to, it's not a fifty foot setback, correct?
Of course.
Right. So that drive area is going to come right up to that property line, where somebody put the fence. And those oak trees aren't going to be there.
The ones to the right of where his, the ones to the right, put your, put your mark, the ones to the right of that. He wants to leave those.
Kind of where my cursor is, approximately to the right of my cursor is where he's saying. He wants to leave the trees with. Let me go back, yeah, let's go back, let me go back. Um.
And do we have pictures going over the back?
So right here, if you see right here, there's the pavement, and you can see it's. The pavement doesn't go to the end of the building in south, it's kind of like. I don't want to say it's right in the middle in between. Yeah, worse one, the chain was in south, it's maybe, maybe two thirds of the way or something. And I think he's saying, and I'm sorry, I can't see my cursor very well, but just to the right of the pavement here, he's saying, so you can keep. The existing mature trees.
No, those, those. Are those on your property or those on the?
No, no.
That's what I'm, I'm guessing.
They never mind those.
They're going to be, they're going to say.
Yeah, no, they're, they're going to have virtual, virtually no effect, they could seem like.
So where are you putting the fence, if those trees are?
Right behind those trees.
Okay.
Ever right behind.
Okay.
Or we'll see the the layout or?
Yeah.
So is, is the cutout where the, where the trees are on the left hand side, that? Well, what is that cutout, you know, just leaving all trees there?
Then actually for stormwater, still, the only thing probably, not not right probably, but all of those trees.
So it's still.
So, so all the trees. Just for clarification, are are from the. To the left side of food line, meaning if you're looking at extending the food line, the parking lot, the food line. All the trees to the left side, pardon. Come down, if you're coming right up to the. Property line and all that, the stormwater intention area, there's nowhere for trees to remain, uh, in between. The food line and the crediting, correct?
Uh, yeah, we won't go the. Part of the line, but you get five and dog, there's going to be a few trees left up near the line, but yeah, it's large for those trees.
You won't be able to put in trees in the size. Of the area, the, the storm, because people tend to destabilize the, the, the structure.
Could you put it somewhere to the left? Or to fifty two. No, it's not on property line, like you said, eighty five feet from here, hopefully, and it's.
Well, you could put there, where there's, there's one really tall skinny trees in the, I don't know, oh. It's a type of, I agree.
Thank you.
What's that, is that what it is?
So we have, just to be clear, we have one set of fences going all around property regardless. We're now adding some screening, fencing as well, too. On the end, to, as Mr. Fairchild suggested, recommended extending, you know, with another number of pounds there. The, the, this, the, the. The fence that you're putting around the property itself, is that going to have a kind of, screens is just going to be wired fences.
That's not said at this time, something we talked about early on. Some of the members of the community that did the life. Would actually save money, but they didn't put any, some of them who's not putting it, if it was going to be changing, leave minutes, or like, see if it's on rate, or I might hate. I'm probably close to taking that out of the equation. Um. I, I guess I kind of looked at like all those details, we were able to later, we wanted to, or did you just range, or we're trying to work with south, we wanted to, it just range. Um, but I guess, I wasn't going to hear from the videos and talk about, could I have, my business is in the building. That I'm in, in all the building, we've already rezone. Or the subtle curves, so. I think it's kind of where, I can't remember what this is, it's in the.
Well, part of the S U P process is for us to play some type of stipulation, like we're talking about. And that's the only thing we've been talking about right here is. Additional screening. And that's, that's one of the big things, it's going to be our store, it's going to take away profit values, it's going to. Be a disruption to the community, yes, that's what we do with it.
I know.
And that's all, that's all reason we're talking about, possibly put an additional training down at the back. Just.
I know, but as we're right now, it's really, I just, for any need, between two. Uh, B one, B's plan.
For, that, that is a stipulation, we can put in.
We're opening some free things every time. They make some more.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, you want to say, I mean, you can say.
We're not talking about putting a screening fence all the way around the.
Yeah.
Saying, put it, put it between. Where the businesses are. Thank you.
And I guess somebody wrote up the ball, would you maybe like those screening fences, because we really considered on.
They can't be like.
It's not really any name.
Anybody else?
Yeah, is this the south side of the fire department that you can turn around and track? And, yeah.
It's a part of the plan, we use a certain radius around that factory.
So it's had the movement, it's kind of different.
I think it's kind of like that, where the, the circle there indicates the required cutting radius, that up now, the. There already was for the P R C, and then they will come out. In the future cycle, if they, for example, if they wanted to tend to wire. The building to be shorter, and that, that's a code that they can force upon us, literally regardless of the building.
So that building won't be as long as it looks, and it'll have to be.
Possibly, they'll be dictated that to us, and we'll have to follow their wish.
Can, can we, can we? Put a condition in, as it says. You know, we would like screening, potentially screening all the way up, you know, not, not, I don't know, but say. To the right of south, to, uh, to the right of his, uh, his main building, which is going to have different features to it, like a figure those down. To where food line gets there. With kind of the idea that. Once the facility is built. And and maybe it doesn't, doesn't make sense, I can stand standpoint instructor, then once the facility is built, you know, if. If the trees are there, you don't need to put a screening in, if the trees aren't there, and it's visible, and we want you to put a screen, I don't know if we can make that condition that way.
I think.
We have to talk about this, because Josh has been sort of agreeable. But one of, one of the problems with. Extending the screening or not. Is it has to be related. And you have to be able to articulate how it's related to the contractor storage. So if what you're doing is trying to screen all the buildings. Not all those buildings are going to be involved with the. With the contractor storage. And since the, uh. Since the storage units are used for writing. That you can't justify on the basis of screening those.
But is the contractor storage, I don't know, in front of, front of part?
That's what I understand it.
Well, it, it, it is in a part, and then you need to get anything agreeable to make those changes, and I think he's heard of. Yeah, I think he's heard, heard what community said, I mean, the proper.
He, he can, and.
You're saying we can't condition.
It's not a problem, no, no, you can condition. But it has to be to alleviate some conditions arising out of the use, which requires the special permit.
So.
Now, there are screening in landscaping requirements for all of them. They're, they're not as elaborate or as long, yes. It's what we're talking about here, but we got to have, got to have landscaping around the front. You know, you got to have landscaping in some way. To satisfy the number. But, uh. I, I think you need to be mindful of that. So if you, if you put a condition, you had to put. You know, building a blank screening around the whole, the whole thing. I think it would be, I think you need to articulate how that serves the purpose of alleviating anything. Any adverse conditions posed by the special use.
Well, so, you know, if you put it out, you know, what is, what is the object by screening, whatever they're getting.
Mr. Johnson, read.
And I know, I understand that, so I, that's. And I know, I understand that, so I, that's, and that's, it's not a condition, it's a proper.
No, this, this is, this is a condition.
We're, we're beginning to agree. But you're saying.
No, you're imposing this condition, this is not from.
Well, he's agreed to it.
Right.
Right.
I didn't want to get into that, but, you know.
Right.
Seems to me even sort of. Easy on having it in the term one.
No, I mean, I, again, I, this is, this all, this all came down to for all this, because, you know, there were concerns on community members. Um, and, you know, there were concerns in terms of the aesthetics, and, you know, that's been a case. You know, I suggested to the general. Um, so that there was a lot between for you to work with the community to that. Certainly come back and put this in place from that standpoint. You know, Mister Terry, I said, can you extend the screen in that way, I'm saying, can you extend the screen a little bit to the left as well too? Uh, to address that, that's really. Saying there. You know, behind the food line, I don't think. There's really any way you can see that, because there's gonna have a food line building blocking the view in that angle. From that standpoint, but. You know. That's been a criticism, it's been analyzed, is, you know, is this gonna be a big access or is it? Hell. Uh, you know, that's what people are. Looking to us to just try leading in, because that's not the case.
So we would think, you know, I think. You know, to the big point, it really, this is very, if you didn't have restrictions, it would be. No natural storage, and then it'd be fair to let us move in on the whole thing, like if I saw it, put it outside. Could you screen it in the name? I don't think the site has been anything different. Although he's there. You know, it's banned being into it, but the building is a material same, site looks same. Especially for it or not, so it's not really. Especially if you're in a unique situation, because of the other conditions. Doesn't really create a change in the appearance of.
Do all, are, are all buildings? If the S U P passes, are all buildings? Subject to the S U P? In other words, he could use any one of those.
He could use any one. The relation.
And, 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 and it's gotta be different.
Yeah.
He's putting, no, I, I think.
No, all, all. As on the project, it's a different three faces. Where he parks his vans or puts his equipment all, won't be there.
Right.
Would they have to be inside? Suppose, suppose they don't pass the standards, and he could still do his business. Correct?
Certainly with the officer.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh.
And the storage.
And he certainly have the storage.
And he could put his trucks in the storage.
Well, he could. He's, he's not asking to put it up, because I understand.
This all.
I, I, he's not saying, he's not putting none of this, he's putting his, uh, if you will, his end. His products and, uh, equipment and materials.
Mm-hmm.
What time do you guys start?
Seven o'clock, with all my company employees taking on the.
We go all over the night, take them home.
It adds five, five charles, really early, early on to just more storing, like, like packages and. All items that might come with it, because of the mashup, and then I have all sort of, uh, stuff. I'm like, they even said it all, so they, 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 it's not a personal show. I got in, I got out, the guy, they're coming. I have one area that's like, uh, small land area, just a bit of tall, little small, literally have a small shop. But I think it's gonna be, there's really big trucks, there's a new. Series track, I'm gonna come in, in an hour.
That's what I'm gonna say, or later, no, what do you think, ladies, John?
I mean, I'll stick to the dirt.
Working hours. All right, any other question?
Well, so where are we, to where, where, where? You, you agreed to your add and. Another, whether there's more panels needed. That, what we're saying there.
I think, do you have anything specific?
Yeah, I don't think it's a. Well, I don't hear.
If you add any additional, the only handles are conditioned on the act of the E P O S L C. Have, have partners, you don't have to really make the partners and strive that.
Oh.
You know, the other.
So we go right, and then you're still on. No. Talking, talking about going right and add anymore there, that's the same.
Uh, he's talking about like, yeah.
He's talking about if you go to the left.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, but I'm saying. Right.
We're talking to the right, where we look currently, or. Is everything behind the.
I wouldn't worry that everyone all the way.
You know.
They don't have one just in the back of the.
Back, you, uh, how we're reading this.
I think Fred's point, we, we have to specify how much distance we're talking about, right?
Well, I'm sure you can say additional screening shall include. Six to ten panels.
So the condition, the condition has written said, up to forty-eight feet of screen.
Right.
Second, I, yeah, I mean, so he said.
Yeah, you want to say.
Sixty-four.
If you want to say sixty-four.
By the way, Mister Johnson, this, the word up two, good leniency to not have to do that much.
Yeah.
So then it could be, they could make a decision to do it shorter and. Why have the words up two?
Well, this, this doesn't, I think maybe, yeah. Oh, that's your, along with the.
Yeah, they're gonna be able to make it shorter. Why would we have?
Yeah.
But I'm saying, why would they?
Because he.
It's a perfect.
Yeah, they only were showing one, one hundred and two panels on.
Well, I think what you're talking, what it's, what should be, is provided.
My forty-eight feet is forty-eight, yeah, I, I think it's just.
You said, you said.
No, no.
You said that was forty-eight feet.
We did not, we did forty-eight feet.
Have to turn it, it could be more.
And.
Whatever. I do want to know.
Well, I'm happy, no.
I do want to know.
Well, well, I hear you, but, but there is a lot of concern out there that we have other people. So I, I agree with you, we don't, we don't want to get too crazy with it, but there's. There's some distance in there that we're concerned it's not being covered and. If it can, it could certainly help neighbors.
So now, that's the sixty-four, is that what you're saying?
Yes. That's sufficient size.
I would do that.
Yeah.
It makes it weird, there's a minute and a half.
And then I could be fast to that. Anybody have any other question? All right.
No, I haven't. I don't know, this year, I don't know. Oh. Well, I mean, yeah.
Can, can we just say, uh, amendment to the number eight or nine of no less than six or four?
What color are these, are these, uh? Shut up.
Um, it is a tan, most of them are lighter.
Natural.
You want to see that, right?
Okay, what I would suggest is. You. Take condition number nine, the standard of the staff report. And. Let's just read the whole thing. Additional screening shall include.
Eight.
Include. Eight fence panels, no, no. Fence panels that are generally six feet tall by eight feet wide, along with evergreen plants to provide not less than sixty-four feet of screening. Shall be installed.
Could you take out the rest generally?
Well. We just got on eight panels, uh, it's.
Yeah, sometimes panels might be seven, eight, ten.
Point is, don't prescribe it with the panels. Just say it has to be no few. They have to be.
No, 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 no less than sixty-four feet.
Sixty-four feet and sixteen tall.
Right.
Sixteen, okay, sixteen tall.
All right.
Yeah, guys, to put down. Just give my discretion.
Yeah, you said additional screen shall include eight fence panels, no, you said.
Take out the fence panels.
Oh.
Take out the number.
Shelling through fence panels. Along with, uh. A minimum of six feet in height. Along with evergreen plants to provide up to sixty-four, not, not less than sixty-four feet of screening. Shall be.
So it has to be sixty-four feet of screening, after that, that.
Uh, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, yeah. Because up two, we almost allowed them to be, to put a six foot fence wide if they wanted to, and. We should have done that, so we had it correct.
You may say, you know, that, or it be.
All right, you have a question? All right, we have a motion.
And so. So the red is the new including the additional length condition.
And do we have to read that?
Brad, do I need to? Do I need to change in this language? Since we, uh.
Let me get that to stand.
Additional length condition.
What's that much more?
So you said the nine, the eight condition instead, or?
Let me, let me see if I can read it. I move to the board supervisors. Approve, this is especially the twenty-two oh one, Johnson and Company LLC. Special permit request and B one general district, general. Business zoning district. Where its contractor storage yard is expected six point four. Plus the mine state or the tax matters, so and so, and subject to the nine condition in the staff report. As amended. Uh. And, excuse me, the eight, eight. The eight case conditions in the staff report. Plus the additional ninth condition. As amended at the meeting. In substantial performance of the civil engineering slides dated. Uh, August seventeen, two thousand twenty-two, as presented by fifty-four supervisors. I think that covers.
Um. I, I want to say to the community's sake, for, for people who are my constituents and so on, I, I've got to say. So people understand, we, we can't deny this. And, and there was, at least in some cases, related to the. B one zoning happening. Uh, some mess up that made it to where it is what it is. I can't do anything to change it, nor can anybody here. And, um, so when people are asking us to not approve. That is already done, that's allowed on B one. So, all right, do you have a motion? Hey.
I have a stamp.
We, we can't turn back on B one, when, when we. What, what's been done?
Yeah.
So what, what I'm saying, they're talking about stop these stores, these metal buildings are coming in, we can't change that, so. Uh, it is what it is. Because by right, you want.
Do we have a motion?
Okay, I move that the board of supervisors approve, actually, twenty-two oh one, Johnson and Company LLC. Especially used for the net request in the B one general business zoning district. To the medical contract to storage yard is expected to six point four, fuck nine, the state was to pass that. Seventeen fact, two possible two, and seven two. Eight case conditions, you know.
Eight, eight case conditions, and then.
And we lost. The eight case conditions in the staff report, and the additional nine. Condition. As amended. Um, okay, as amended in substantial involvement to the civil engineering side, made August seventeen, twenty twenty-two. As presented by the board of supervisors, writing the leading agenda for today, August seventeen, twenty twenty-two.
All right, uh, second.
Second.
Motion made on this, spoken by Mr. Brian, all the favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, just. Well. Thank you very much, and. Motion passed. Next is any new business?
Uh, just real briefly, um, on, um. The, the, the non-folk, folks, I think it's status, but. He mentioned two things to me and. Um, that he thought would really help with one, so. A continuing the event and increasing the size and helping to achieve kind of his objectives and goals, one was. Allowing camping. I thought it'd be a lot more, uh. You know, a lot more people will be, you know, these are rugged people that come out to these things, he went down inside. They had, some of them had tents on top of their, their pickup trucks, some of them had tents popping out of their things. Um, so he said, you know, just would make it a lot easier for some of these folks. If we allow camping. Um, and then the second thing he said was. Obviously, he's asking for this, but, you know, if we reduce the fee, like it was a twenty-four, it'll be. Four space, but I don't remember, so those were just passing those things, but maybe look into the camping and. What are the structures or, or special. So. That's that.
Yeah, we, we, I thought. We, we, we're like, yeah, I thought we put forward a. A reasonable fee, and just for the whole entire, I mean, because we didn't close out all the trails and everything for everyone the whole day, but, yeah, we.
Yeah, I mean, I think he mentioned like a bit of basically twelve and all, or something, she was paying twenty-four and all, or something like that.
Uh, all of you, I don't remember what it was, right?
He, he, he said basically, first of all, not making any real money of this, and it helps to keep the entrance fees lower. Uh, so.
Wouldn't Aaron sit and know, talk to this man, and he would know the things that we need to do with our, you know, do this again? Tell him, you think, Aaron?
Oh, yeah, I would imagine, I would imagine Aaron spoke to him, I mean, again, some of, some of the information in my county administrative report, Aaron was working with. I can't remember the gentleman's name, working with one of the organizers. And, and, and they also said something about Mr. Brian saying, allow the camping, would, would allow.
Because I think they need to look into that, because it may very well bring relationships.
Yeah, no. Possibly, sure, and, and certainly an argument can be made that giving them a lot of volunteer hours that they would put in. You know, that is a cost savings to the counties, we all do this. Otherwise, staff would be maintaining those trusts.
All right. Any other new business? I'm gonna add one, we talked about with the nonprofits, that I deal with them, and we said we'd all send those to Eric, and. I did it intentionally, so I could mention here, but. Like, so I'll keep it short. My thought was to have every. And, and I'll, I'll defer to next one if we be sure what we're talking about, but a quick summary. Was to have every nonprofit, no matter what their size. Submit, uh, data that supports their need. So.
I think probably better do it, see.
Well, I, I'd like for every one of them to do that, for, so for example, we're giving three hundred dollars to boys baseball. But then they substantiate how many kids they have and what they're gonna do with the money, uh, you know, and how that equates to them. If it's, let's say it's Java. And, um, how many meals do they serve, and how, what's, what's the cost of that, of, of doing that for them? Um, and to me, everybody should submit, it shouldn't be a tough thing to submit data. Uh, with your budget request that. Gives numbers.
And some of them do their requests, I don't know, all of them do, and some.
All of them, when they come together, they do. Well, and not all of this, um, but I'm just saying. For us to have it in writing, I feel like they should, when they submit their requests, they should submit data for us to track. how investment is doing. And then have, still have that threshold of one of X and X size and how much money to give them. Said they'll give us a, a more in-depth presentation such as Macabre.
All right. And what do you just?
So what are we, so what's the end of that? What are, are we just?
About, do we want to have them send something to us in writing? I would guess, Mr. Fairchild said yes.
Yeah, what, what is you going to show us for the paper you send to every nonprofit of what you, what you want? If that's something that's precious, that can actually be on that budget report. And we have the budget hack. And all we have to do is look at the budget.
I don't think all of them need to do it.
Yeah, let's see, he can recall.
Yeah, yeah. I'll tell you what. And we only extended minutes, so just y'all, y'all were here and trying to find sheet and then put those things on. I just want to clarify, the reason we came back up is because we were about to move on to something else and we didn't bring any closer to what we were doing next.
I don't know what I wanted to say. Do we know what we're going to be discussing on the twenty step? We have an agenda, we just want a hot pot.
So we're, we're going to get you an agenda. We actually just had a meeting, so later today, yes. Two, three, five, three. Yeah, and we, we discussed with them and in, until I was going to discuss that, I mean, so what the plan was, I mean, so kind of the first part of the meeting would be. Yeah. There'll be a general, there'll be some documents and information going along with that. It's, uh, next, next Saturday from eight thirty. It starts at, the retreat starts at nine, at eight thirty nine, there'll be some food. And then so we'll have to let, so, so basically eight thirty five.
All right.
Unless, unless, you know, unless the board would just like fishing and then get through things.
Okay, we're good. All right. Take us until twelve o'clock, so why don't we make a motion and then until one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Second by Mr. O'Brien. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, chair both aye. All right. I will now open the second round of public comment. Anyone who should address the board, please state your name and address. Keep your comments five minutes on topic and direct to the board.
Minister Chairman, board, my name is Warren Plann, bringing nineteen dollars, here it goes. Um, so just so you know, the buildings, the storage buildings are two hundred and forty five feet long. So the sixty four feet we're going to cover all the hundred and eighty feet of those buildings. You got three of them back there next to my property. All the buildings, the exception of Ox, are two hundred and forty five feet. Okay, I'm pretty sure two forty five is longer than sixty four. All right. And then the non existent invalid meeting, June the fifteenth, it was asked that the developer communicate with us in a power of something that and that did not happen. This is what it came about. On July sixth, the, Mr. Chairman got up and said, he didn't have time and because of the vacation, he wanted to reach out to us and communicate with us. Again, we're talking two months. And, uh, and then the communication was what you call a night, might as well have been a yellow highlighter pencil that made it look longer than forty eight feet because you pull that back up, go right ahead, pull it up and you'll see it. It looks like it's a hundred and fifty feet, but it says forty eight feet. But the plan is, it's easy to see, all you guys got to do is to pull it up on your own little iPad and, and blow it up, two hundred and forty five feet. The other part is, is in the, in the valid June the fifteenth meeting, Mr. Schim also said that this area right here near style is in also a form order intention. There's two places because of the length of this property where there's a little bit of form order intention. So the trees you were referring to, they're going to be gone too because you can't build a form order on one tree and all that. So again, misinformation. And Mr. Fairchild, you may be partially relaxed that there was nothing that could be done and I also agree, going back to, uh, um, the B one issue, I don't think Mr. Johnson needs this issue. B one allows him to do offices and allows him to do authorities. So why even drag and crew this issue? Again, you guys have ownership of all of this. You have ownership of this debacle that brought me into it, the property owner, Riley Monticello, and even Mr. Johnson. He's had to deal with this with. So I, I just, I prefer the light of the man. I, I, I don't understand why five intelligent people can't get that and can't admit it to the fact that they did something wrong and that they fix it. It wouldn't be easy, Mr. Fairchild, it wouldn't be easy to go back and review the June fifteen meeting. Then you all could really look at me and smile and pass it in anyway. So there you go. We did it right. We're going to pass it anyway. So, so it'll be, I would be in a better position than we're in right now. But at least you guys do the thing right and do it like that. But you should not do that. This is the example that you guys are setting for our community. This is the way you intend to lead. This is the way that you intend to allow the administration to advise you to go over. And then it's that, break my heart. You said earlier, you love the Savannah County. I haven't been here long to do that and I know you grew up here, but I've been here like dang all the time. And I love the county too. But I can tell you what, I don't like it right now. You know, you love something that you cannot like, and I can promise you that what I've seen out of this board in the last two months is this part. This part. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wants to speak? Okay, I will go to Minister Donna DiGwana. Thank you for waiting, ma'am. Have at it, Miss DiGwana.
Thank you very much. Well, I think you heard parts of what I was going to say anyway, but my name is Donna DiGwana, one four eight Crepe Myrtle Drive. Yeah, it is a sad day. It's very sad that you guys have really messed up this end of the county. It looks, it's going to look really bad. Sorry, I have to say it. Colonial Circus, I'm sorry, Brittany, it is a circus up there. It will be a mess. But we were stuck with it. We are stuck with metal sheds. Mr. Johnson doesn't care about his neighbors. It's obvious he's going to push through what he wants and only what he wants. We will not be able to screen at any point away from this. It is a big mess and I would only hope that we could have done better for Nahor. It's incompatible use. It's going to be an eyesore. It is an eyesore up at Colonial Circus. Sorry, you know, I, I had better hopes for this county. I, I also love this county, but no, I do not like it. And there are times when this government makes Hooterville's government look smart. I just feel really bad because we should be better than this and it's, it's just a mess. I also don't understand why we're pushing to look like a suburb. I keep saying, we have a comp plant. You don't follow with your comp plan. We're going, we're writing another comp plan. So what? You guys can dismiss that too? Follow the guidelines of the comp plan. We are not a rural community. We are, we, we are not a suburban community, but you're pushing us heavily in that direction. It, it's, it's really a shame. You do not listen to your public. You do not hear us. You sometimes hear us, but you don't listen all the time. It's really a shame. And, uh, that's all I got to say. I hung in there long enough and now I'm going to go and do what I need to do for the rest and you know, I guess I just have to look away and close my eyes to a lot of this. I'm very pro-business, very, but you have to vet the businesses coming in here. You guys made the mistake on the Johnston property. You made a big mistake. This is a blight on our community, a blight, and all of the people in Lake Monticello know it. They know and they're not happy either. Thank you. Have a safe evening.
Beautiful. This, uh, Carter Johnston.
Hi, how are you guys doing? Roxanne Carter Johnston, four ninety eight Cunningham Meadows Drive. Um, I just wanted to speak up to say thank you. That's it. Um, it's a quarter to, to twelve and I wanted to take a moment to say thank you. Um, I do love Savannah County and I appreciate the growth and the direction that we're going in and I appreciate, um, everything that you guys voted on tonight. I sat here with my high schoolers, Cory Johnston's, uh, daughters, and we watched the rest of this meeting, uh, from home. So we are very proud of him and our county and thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else?
Don't see anyone that's here.
And if you're still with Minister Carter, I'll tell you. All right, um. Anyone else inside, any audience? Minister Gray. Brittany. Teaching you. You got to unmute yourself here. Maybe it's a little, little.
I think it just came on.
Yeah. We're waiting. Good news is that I don't have to drive the bus in the morning. Bad news is going to the town for the Corona, so I'm leaving at six thirty, going to the Corona. I'll be driving at eighty one.
I had that out of me.
Yeah.
Oh, no, 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 you don't. You have to be, you know, get up early, but you're flying to California, so you get to get on the airplane and go. Going home next tomorrow. Yeah, yeah. I have to. My wife and my friend, both actually, they asked on the local.
She sent a message that said it won't let her on. Nothing on my side.
Minister Gray, we can't get this fixed. I apologize to you, but it's getting like.
Make sure speakers aren't getting.
Can you hear me?
Hey, there you are.
Sorry, it wasn't letting me unmute. Um, I just wanted to go behind Roxanne and Cory and say, I understand everybody's not in agreement with, with their development either. Uh, however, they have really poured into this community for years and have done a lot for the residents here. And while we say we don't want a suburb here, many of us live in suburbs while we're saying that. And it's really disrespectful to those of us who have, are trying to bring opportunities to this county. So thank you, Roxanne and Cory, for standing strong and, um, I'll do whatever I can to continue to support local businesses here.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone who speaks at this time? I will now close the second round of public comment. Mr. O'Brien. Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any kind of force right out of entering the vote being certain of the votes of session two dot two dot three seven eight seven. Litigation and go to a game and give the purposes discussing apple litigation and management.
My motion is made. I'm going to take that on the slow ground. All favor say aye. Close. Chair votes aye. We now close.